Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call to order the Monday, May 17th, Currituck County Board of Commissioners meeting. First on the agenda is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. We have no one signed up. Is there anyone in the audience who would wish to present a prayer and a pledge of Seeing none, I'll ask Commissioner Owen Etheridge if he would do us the honors this evening.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, asking you to grant your wisdom and your grace and mercy on Currituck County and this Board of Commissioners as we do the people's business. We ask you to be with our country as we're going through some trying times right now. It looks like the light at the end of the tunnel finally is at hand, and we know it's through your grace and mercy that that is occurring. Father, be with us tonight safely as we go home and take care of each and every one of us and our citizens here in Currituck County. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge. The next item on the agenda is the approval of agenda. Is there any changes or can I get a motion for approval? A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda passes. The next item is a presentation from Veteran Service Officers Association, the North Carolina Association of County Veteran Services. Brad Stroud, the president, will be presenting tonight. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. I hope most of you will not have any trouble hearing me. If you do, please just let me know, and I can turn it up or down very easily.
Sounds good.
Good afternoon, Chairman Payton. I think Mr. Beaumont has something personal he didn't want to see me or something. We've got to talk. He's supposed to see me twice, but Commissioner McCord, Commissioner Etheridge, Commissioner White, Commissioner Jarvis, Commissioner Etheridge, and Ben Stockholder and everyone in attendance, and I think we're on TV, so, wow, the TV's starting up. My name's Brad Stroud. I am the president for the North Carolina Association of County Veteran Service Officers. I am also the Hiredale County Veteran Service Officer in Statesville and Mooresville. We man two offices. In the North Carolina Association of County Veteran Service Officers, NCA CBSO, I don't know how we can get it any shorter, but we've tried. There's a potential for 102 member organizations. So, there's 100 counties in the state of North Carolina, and we have two tribal entities. We have the Eastern Band of Cherokee, and we also have the Lumbee Tribe, which we have offices in both of those. So, that leaves us, and there's not, so, we have a total of 90, excuse me, 95 offices, including, so, we have seven counties' potential that could have additional services for service officers. Currituck County is the third-largest county without, by veterans' population, without a county veteran service office program. As I became president about six years ago, education and standardization of training became a huge issue to me, and as we worked on that issue, we started looking at needs in areas that were potentially underserved. Some counties, I will give you the number-one county in the state is Forsyth County, does not have a service office, and I don't understand that. Their argument and mentality is that the Veterans Administration Regional Office is in Winston-Salem. That's wonderful, but Department of Veterans Affairs do not have veteran service officers. The VA will simply tell a veteran to file a claim. You believe that you have some injury or illness caused by military service. The VA will say, "File a claim. We'll look at your records and we'll determine it." There's no development. There's no helping the veteran to sit down, making sure that you have all the problems that you need. You must have an injury, illness, or a veteran's service, a current disability diagnosed that you're suffering from that injury or illness, and a nexus that connects the three together, the two together. The VA doesn't do that. They have a duty to assist, as they have to, but they're just going to use any information and will make a decision what we think's best in your interest. So, and Lenore County is the other one, in Kinston, and they have a large state presence. As I looked across this, as I studied as the president, you're in a very unique place. I mean, you're very remote, as I joked, you know, there's a relationship with myself and your commissioner, Mr. Stockholder. I called him, I said, "Come out." So, "What do you mean, bring cheerwinds undropped?" He said, "Man, I'm missing Bojangles. It takes 30 minutes to get to Bojangles." So, I almost jokingly wrote a hinty Bojangles. But, I could have wrote, "Oh, the cheerwinds sounded good." So, but, so, you're remote, and even getting to the near state office is a 30-minute travel, and learning and doing my homework and studying, even to get within your own county to individual places is, can be challenging at best some days. So, in your agenda, I believe you have a packet of information. I did about as much homework as I could there are already, even without a service officer involved. You've got about 3,200 veterans, a little more than 3,255 that are identified as receiving some type of a VA benefit. Maybe they've gone to a VA clinic, maybe they're, some level, they've used the VA. You have at least, and this is 2019's numbers, FYI, you have just shy of 1,000 who are receiving compensation and pension, which is a direct payment made to veterans, and/or, well, in this case, 1,000 is just to the veterans. That is not including family members. So, if you have questions about the data, I think each of you have my personal cell phone number. I gave a card, and if you do not, I will make sure you have it tonight before I leave. But, why should you have a county service office? Why should you invest in a county veteran service office? And I'm going to put it in one word. It's accountability, and it's accountability to your veterans. I think if you look in your packet of information, I ultimately answer to a two-star, retired two-star general, who is our chairman of the board. When you have the ability, you say, "Mr. Stroud, I have, or Mr. Mallory, I have a problem with veterans' services." We're going to take you right to the place. We're not like Walmart, or we're not like Lowe's. I don't point to Channel, to aisle three. We're going to walk you through the program. We're going to sit down with you, instead of telling you to fill out a form and say, "Good luck." We sit down and do an open-ended fact-finding, open-ended interview. You may come in and say, "I just want to come here to find out about medical benefits." What we may find out is, and I'm not sure, I think I know a few folks who are veterans, but I'm going to use Kevin, you're probably the closest to my age, find out that you served in Iraq. Well, then, we find out that he makes it to be in the burn pit registry, things that he has no way of knowing. There's an old adage kind of in the mountains, "You don't know what you don't know." So, our job is to educate you, to teach you. You may not even realize there's a benefit out there that suits or fits into your wheelhouse, and that is our job, as we sit here and answer accountable to the veterans of the county, and ultimately to you then as the commissioners. You're in a veteran-centric location. I think you're going to be a population, one of the things I looked at in your data packet, is you'll see that there's a trend. You're trending up significantly as you're having veterans move into your communities, and that need's going to be there. As we sit down, the big thing that we have to do that we're different, I have this happen a lot, people move into my area, and they will say, "Well, I talked to the VA." Who'd you talk to? Well, I call them 1-800-827-1000. It might have been, and they don't even tell you their first name, and they won't tell you their name. They may give you a first, maybe. With 20,000 people, you'll never get back to whoever it was. We sit down, establish and maintain and develop the rapport, the trust and the confidence of that veteran, so that when they sit down with us, they know we're working for them. We explain to the veteran, "We're not here to help the VA with you. We're here to help you with the VA." This is one volume. This is the Bible that I live within. How could a veteran, I do this, I've done this for 19 years. How could a veteran that served four years have any idea? It's kind of like, I know, Mr. McCord, you have a law enforcement background, I believe. You know, a citizen trying to understand the law. Representing yourself in court is, you know, kind of the old adage that you have a fool for a client. So, our job is to know that law and represent that veteran. Cost versus reward. I think it's probably one of the lowest-budgeted offices you'll find. I know I am still, after 19 years and growing my staff, I now have myself in two, and I'm still by far the lowest-budgeted county office in my county. I have not spent $200,000 yet in a single year. So, I'd love to have an extra $200,000 laying around, but what you get, by no means am applying $200,000 to y'all. The VA is a complex entity. I jokingly tell my clients, it's a three-headed monster. There's the VA, benefits, healthcare, and national cemeteries. I have veterans all the time that'll tell me, "Well, I told the VA that Salisbury, well, that's the healthcare side, but that didn't notify them of the death or the passing of a spouse or a child, or an address change." They do not talk to each other. So, that veteran service officer can help those veterans, make sure they're staying completely connected in every aspect. It's not a cookie-cutter system. Two of us could have served in the same unit, but our benefits could be different based upon missions, based upon MOS, based upon exposures, because we didn't always see the same thing, even though we may be together. Pride of ownership, that you can look at your veterans, what are you doing for veterans? I know you've got a veterans advisory board here. I often ask, you know, what is the function? My function, I probably tell my veterans, "I really don't work for the county. I work for you. The county just happens to pay me with your tax dollars." And it brings a lot of credibility, they understand that I'm not torn between serving two masters. I don't have to worry about what the VA thinks of me as long as I'm nationally accredited myself, and initially, your service officer would at least be regionally, and then hopefully nationally accredited, to represent those claims. There's, veterans' benefits are earned. It's not a handout program. And often, I get asked this question of what is a veteran, and what benefits? If you're a county VSO, all veterans are veterans, and what does that mean? If you're in the National Guard or Reserves, if you serve in combat or you didn't, you're still a veteran. It's just you may not be able to apply for all programs, but as a CBSO, you still can serve them all. You can serve them differently. An individual still may be entitled to a flag at death, a foot marker, a license plate. If he just wants a copy of his records, maybe he needs a copy of a shot record. We're able to access that information and get it for him without them having to jump through all the hoops and figure out how to go about it. And some re-benefits, like the license plate, hunting and fishing license, property tax exclusions if veterans apply. The CBSOs can assist and handle that. If you took away the CBSOs in the state of North Carolina, I represent, right now, I believe, 187, as the present, 187 CBSOs. If there were CBSOs in the state of North Carolina, there would be a total, give or take, of one or two, the DAB has three, American Legion One, Veterans of America One, and a VFW One. And that would be all the VSOs that you would have, minus some state folks. Your VSO must be accredited. It would have to be, you'd have to commit to at least 1,000 hours a year if you choose to go less than full-time. Based upon your numbers, I do not think that's a direction I would recommend, but that's got to be your decision. And that CBSO's got to work 1,000 hours a year and must become accredited, and then must, can have CE hours each year to remain accredited. We assist with military records, with DFAS, if anybody's a retiree in the area, we help them operate in that federal bureaucracy. We help with guard and reserve retirements, metal replacements. How many times do you, if you've had a veteran and they said, "I got a, one of the greatest pleasures I ever had was there was a gentleman in my community who earned a Purple Heart in Luxembourg in World War II. He didn't realize he'd even earned it, and it was never formally, the award was not given. 51 years and 51 weeks to the day, we presented that man his Bronze Star for valor and a Purple Heart that the Army missed." Yes, sir.
Since you're on that subject, can I ask you a question about that?
Absolutely, sir.
Kind of personal, but my wife, her father was in World War II.
Yes, sir.
Battle of Bastogne, Battle of the Bulge, he earns the medals.
Yes, sir.
He lost them in a fire in Powell's Point.
Yes, sir.
The building that supposedly had his records burnt down.
Yes, sir.
They have never been able to establish that to get replacements, medals. Can you guys work with that, or is that something that's even doable in there?
There are some, there are alternate methods, and that's one of the advantages of having experience, that you learn, I'm going to use another country term, to learn in to skin the cat backwards. Sometimes fighting up front is not the best, you're not going to win. There are alternate methods, there are alternate records, and what we have to do is go about that process. It's not an easy, it's not a quick process, but sometimes it can be done. We're not 100% successful, but I have seen it done on numerous occasions. One of the advantages of, if you do put that on, and your CBSO being a member of the association, is we have experience levels from a couple days. To have a lady who is in our association has 42 years as a CBSO. Not saying we've seen it all, but nothing surprises us very much, and that there are alternate ways, and those things are very precious, and I will say, especially when the veteran is, if the veteran's still alive and you want to get those presented, we have been able to get some congressional pressure, and we've been able to go some different routes, and so we could potentially, I'm not going to promise, but...
I just didn't know if that was even doable in our office.
It is, it is a, it is a exercise that my office would gladly take, so...
Thank you, I was just carrying a...
You're very welcome. We assist with burials, whether it's in a national cemetery, whether it's in a local cemetery, assisting, making sure the documentation's there so veterans get their rights of a 21-gun salute, taps, and folding of the flag, or any portion thereof. I had an uncle who served in the Philippines in World War II, and to my surprise, about a year before he died, he invited me out to dinner, and he said, "I want my flag, and I want my taps." He said, "Son," tears welled up in his eyes, and this nearly 90-year-old man, "Don't let them shoot a gun over my head. I hurt enough to last me a lifetime." And we stand up and make sure that the family understands that. You know, sometimes they'll share with us what they will not share with anyone else, because we are their brother, we are that person, that confidant. One of the most amazing things, I had, just happened again recently, a veteran with full Alzheimer's, we were still looking for documentation, family said, "He doesn't remember anything. Does not remember, he, he didn't know what rank he was." I said, "Is he in?" "Oh, no, he's, we got him, can you bring him in?" Brought him in, we talked a little bit, he didn't remember. Little bit, I looked over and, "Soldier, what's your service number?" I don't know if it was the voice, I don't know if it was the command, I don't, he remembered it, and it was right, with full-blown Alzheimer's. I've seen it more than one time. We sit, we get a chance to talk, and I think sometimes all of us have a chance to relive those memories, and as you talk more, things will come back. Our job is to help extract that information. We collaborate and support with other agencies within the county. I think one of the things, if you read in my county manager's letter, we work with our ICATS, we work with our Parks and Rec to set up different programs and make it beneficial across the board. We're not a, we're not a silo. We spread and share our information as much as we can. Training, the North Carolina Association of County Veteran Service Officers and the North Carolina Department of Military Veterans Affairs, Lieutenant General Gaskins is secretary, and Assistant Secretary Falls is the undersecretary, and we stand at the ready to assist Currituck County and any other county with standing up, in your case, a brand-new office, or any office that exists that has any type of training issues. They have two training teams, an east and a west team, that would provide training to brand-new service officers. And then, with the association, what we want to do is build a network where that service officer can reach out without fear of feeling embarrassed, feeling, "I'm not adequate yet." Reach out and say, "How do I best tell my veterans? Set your appointment. Find out what it is. If you need us to talk to them, we will. We're going to guide you through that process to build up your confidence, your trust with that veteran." So, as I sat and looked, and I am going to surprise you with a number just a little bit in advance, so don't hit me. If he goes to throw something, somebody let me hit him. So, and I said the cost of, the cost versus reward. I don't have it in front of me, but each of you do. I think the number that Currituck County in CMP alone, I want to say it was about $19 million that comes here. That's tax-free money that gets spent here. That is true dollars, that's not an estimated value of anything. If you look, it's called a GDX report. Mr. White, I think you're looking, I'm looking into your eyes, and I appreciate it. It's the GDX. I believe it's about $19 million a year in that year that came in. That number's growing, if you track back, and I think I gave you about 10 years' worth of data. That's a growing number, and your veterans' population continues to grow. And as I understand, your Moyac area continues to grow, and you being such a, if, not any offense to anyone, bedroom community into the Virginia Beach area, I think that will continue to grow. Every economist I've ever seen, heard, or talked to will tell you that a dollar gets spent three times before it'll leave the economy. So, if it's getting spent $19 million, and I don't know what your tax rate is, but if it's spent that many times, that's a pretty sizable influx into your, into your community. As I started thinking about this to express to you recommendations, I don't think you should ever point out a shortfall without recommendations. And when I say I shouldn't say it's a shortfall, but not having a veteran service office program. You know, as we shop for cars, we think about our needs. I think you could buy Ford Pinto, and that Pinto would be, you would hire a brand-new person who's never been a service officer. They're going to have to go through the training, they're also going to have to learn how to set up an office, how to make it run, all the expectations, and basically rely on someone else to come in on a part-time basis to help get you trained up and help you work through the issues, and the state and association will gladly help you with that. You can hire somebody that's locally, that's locally, you do exist. Yes. I thought it was personal, sir. It was.
Some have a life.
It's a Navy guy, what are you going to do?
But, you can hire someone, and be either from your area, and I think that's significant to me. I was born in Raines, Hiredale County, and when I came home, you know, there was, the people could say, "Oh, you're Reed Stroud's boy." Yes, sir, I am proudly. I'm also myself. So, there's a connection. You understand the nuances of your area, and I think that's huge, because what you're building is that credibility. So, I think you could do that, and be in the neighborhood of, with benefits and the cost for an office in the 75,000 to 80,000 a year. The next level, I think you could buy an F-150, and that would be trying to find someone that's already accredited, but most likely, they're not going to be from your area. You're going to be bringing in someone from another area to come in. They'll know the veteran service officer part, but they're not going to know your area. They're not going to understand the nuances, and they're going to have to come in and work on the marketing part of it. And then, the last statement, in the forward line, I am actually a young man, but as I thought about this, buy Lincoln. What does that entail? Well, you know, each one of them, you move up, you get a few more bells and whistles. The Lincoln would be, I'd recommend that on a temporary basis, you bring in a seasoned CBSO that'll work for you for a shorter period of time, and at the same time, hire a local person to begin their training. They'd sit at right seat, left seat, pilots and truck drivers, and understand that well, and work with them, help them stand up the office, help promote it, go through, start establishing the connections. And then, as agreed upon by the county, that person would ease out and then fall back in, and you'd still be at the support from the NCA CBSO and the state association. And I think even there, if you bought the Lincoln, on the first year would be your most expensive, and I think you would still be in the 150,000-a-year range just on your first year, but you would have a lot of experience where you could actually go to work, you'd bring somebody in that walks in with a PIV card, CAC card for military folks, that can access VA information, be able to help a veteran right on the spot. So, that's pretty much my pitched user. You have a huge number here. I think that number that I'm even giving you of 3,255 is a third to maybe 40% of your market. I do not believe that you're anywhere near the halfway mark of your veterans' population, and it doesn't cost you any more to see anymore. If you grow, at some point, you may want to think about expansion, but I think above a county of your size, a one-person shop, I think the hardest thing, if you try to bring in a brand-new person, trying to learn to be a service officer and trying to learn to run a service office at the same time, would be very, very difficult, but it's doable. So, any questions?
Do you want to share officers?
We, in the state of North Carolina, we do have one scenario that, which is, if you'll give me one second, I will tell you, and it's over this way. It is Gates-Herford. They do share a service officer. I think, I think Gates is the smaller of the two, I believe, and they have them one day, and the other county has them four. And they have them one day and the, and the other county has them four. And so they'll go into that one county. The thing that here, I'm kind of looking at, and I don't know, you know, if you go out to Elizabeth City, there is a state service office. And when we spoke here to the Veterans Commission, Larry, there were several who appeared that they went and visited. Their, their experience was, was well and well-perceived. But, you know, they're supporting, you know, if I say the name wrong, I'm very sorry. Perquins?
Perquins.
Perquins, Perquins does not have, but I think that's Elizabeth City. Am I correct in that? Or is Camden? So those, none of those have a CBSO. So the state office, and I actually personally know the person there, Diane Hale, is that director. They're getting hammered because Camden doesn't have one.
But it's Dager.
Dager has a part-time, absolutely. Patricia Osol. So I'm a firm believer in if you build it, they will come. You're very close to the border. You, Virginia does have veteran service officer programs. But to be able to look at your veteran population and say, this is what we do. We provide this so that you have full access to everything. And that person has access to everywhere else to, to make sure, am I asking the right questions? Am I looking in the right direction? To sit down with a veteran, maybe they've already sat down. I, I'd recently had a retired '06 Marine submariner commander who came in. He was thirty percent. He looks at me and he hands me his letter and he says, I'm thirty percent. I just found, I realized that I should have been getting paid for my family for the last year. But it was way in the back and I, I didn't know about it. I said, I want to apply. Well, I'm sorry, sir, you've lost that benefit. It's kind of back to the, you didn't know the law. So he lost a full year of those benefits. But he didn't like my answer. But I said, sir, let's sit down, let's see what we can do. And he looks and he says, I have two master's degrees. I said, thank you, sir. I'm, I'm very thankful, I'm very appreciative. I have a PhD. And he said, really? I said, where from? I said, Texas, Texas Central University. He said, really? Yeah, public high school opponent. Make a long story short, he's now a hundred percent service-connected because he did not fully understand and know everything he was service-connectable for. As I spoke with him, I said, every time, I said, sir, I know you commanded a nuclear sub. If propulsion system went down, did you go down and fix it? Or was there an NCO? When Colin went down, did you go fix it? I understand you're very smart, sir. But do you represent yourself in court? And it is a legal process. You're protected through the NCA CBSO and through the North Carolina Department of Military and Veterans Affairs. And yes, there'll be times you may get a complaint. I've, I've had a couple, it's not very often. But I think you're rewarded when your veterans can say, my county cares and helps me obtain every maximum penny I deserve. Not one penny you don't, but every penny that's coming, my county helps me get it.
So my, I went through the Elizabeth City office, the regional care. And, and they did a decent job. They really did. Will Turner, I think, was the gentleman that headed that shop up. Who's back in the day. Navy ships had sails, yeah, yeah. So, and, and, but, you know, they were covering, because they're a regional shop, they were covering, I mean, to get in an appointment with them and to be able to get processed by them was a significant challenge. And so much has changed with the VA regionally that, you know, for example, you'd think that you signed up for the VA in Currituck County. Greenville was the closest, you know, North Carolina office. And that's a trek to go there and be processed by all the stuff that has to be done there. And walking that dog was very difficult because there was no advocate locally to help with that process. You were hoping that the VA was going to kind of steer you right. And they, you know, everything from online registration wound up being screwed up to, and all of that adds to time. Now, I'll tell you, North Carolina, I don't know how we wound up having it so good. But in this region with the VA clinic in Elizabeth City, I have nothing but extremely positive things to say, that with the community care. But it's getting that word out that is not, it's not very easy. And unless you run into the right person, you're not going to find out.
Yes, sir.
So, and from a, from a disability perspective, I saw the good, the bad and the really, really ugly, right? So at one point, I actually had to appear before a judge to adjudicate my claim. Which, anyway, just kind of interesting.
And in that process with our partner, with the NC Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, we actually have a state service office in Winston-Salem, who in fact had happened and you were represented by us. That person will appear with you at no cost to you. If it goes to a national level, let's say, well, we got to appeal to the Board of Veterans Appeals or to the Court of Veterans Appeals. We have also partnered with the NVLSP, the National Veterans Legal Assistance Program, who will also do it at no cost pro bono. And our job is to go through that. What you want is to develop that claim to the point, I often say, we want to hassle and gretle the VA. I want to leave a breadcrumb trail as they read. I want them to follow to the point, there's, there's no place to retreat to. And what we want to lead them to is the conclusion that the only logical, the law says that if we can present the facts to the point that if the evidence is in equipo, I had to learn that word.
If only David Griggs was here, we'd all know what that word meant.
That is in equipo, that the evidence is equal. Then the veteran is supposed to be like baseball. The tie should go to the runner, the tie should go to the veteran. And if you can get to that point, the VA, we lead the VA to that point that they have no choice but to make a logical decision in the favor of the veteran. And you can look at that person. One of the things that I take great pride with Iredal County is we are a standalone department. I answer, now I actually answer to a deputy county manager, but we're directly in the food chain of the county manager and the board, not hidden in some level of a human. Some people say, well, gosh, you're kind of human services. We could put you with HR or DSS. It's really, in my opinion, not a good fit. We're, we're kind of a, if you're a military guy, we're kind of a special advisor to the commanders the way I perceive our, our mission. And I would, I really hope that you'll favorably consider this. It is a, I don't think any of you will ever look back and say, I made a bad decision in putting on a VSO program.
No, I mean, I would just, you know, our military, our veterans and our community are just important to us as our first responders and our deputies. I mean, they, they, they put their lives on the line as well, defending us and our country. And making sure that we have what they need, I think, is, is important for this county here. So, I mean, I'm sure this is something we're going to consider and discuss amongst ourselves and hopefully make a sound decision moving forward. I mean, is there any other comments or questions from this board or anything?
Like you said, like he touched on that number, that thirty-two fifty-five, I can't remember the exact, it was something like that.
Thirty-two fifty-five, sir.
Um, I, like you said, I guarantee it's even higher.
Oh, it has to be.
It, it has to be. I mean, look at all the bases that are in Virginia, Dam Neck, Little Creek, the Coast Guard base.
Election Day, you can count five thousand veterans.
It's crazy. Like I said, I didn't serve in the military. My grandfather was in the military. He was a prisoner of war for almost two years. I remember as a child, Ronald Reagan used to call on his birthday every year. We were kids, I don't know, nine or ten maybe, eighty-four, born seventy. Yeah, nine or ten, and I remember they would, he was president eighty-four. And I remember he would call my grandfather. And I mean, it was the coolest thing, you know? And it wasn't like a, they didn't have like the fake photo, you know, the phone calls like they have now where it'd be somebody, a robot calling him. But I mean, it was, you know, it was a big deal.
Absolutely.
I have all his military medals, they're in a safe deposit box because my mother's passed away, so.
So I'll tell you, in Iredal County, one of the things as I began my process of really trying to understand and assess where we stood. The other aspect I want you to understand, we, we often, I have veterans who'll come in and say, well, I really don't want to do this. They don't want to dig up something or, somebody did more than me and I shouldn't do this because I don't want to take away from someone else. Well, first off, you don't take away from, giving one doesn't take away from somewhere else. But what that CBSO was able to do is look at and say, Mr. Payman, thank you for your service. I understand you may not want to do this. Why do you get up every day and do what you do? Why do you get up and go to work? Why do you sacrifice? Why have you set aside? Now, we can say, well, you know, why did I do twenty-one years? We can say, oh, for the greater good. No, I did it to take care of my family. Okay? So, Mr. Payman, by allowing me to represent you to ensure all of your injuries or illnesses are documented and certified by the Department of Veterans Affairs. If something would happen to you today, then I can go to work in taking care of your family, your spouse. If you've died of a condition or illness that was service-related, now the widow has potential benefits. My office, we track that we have somewhere in the neighborhood of about seventeen or eighteen thousand veterans that we actively see. But when you add in dependent children with education benefits and you add in spouses, I'm somewhere in the neighborhood of about thirty-three thousand clients. Again, like I said, if you build it, they will come. You establish it. It took a while. For the first three years, I was single when I came out of service. I was dating a young lady. I felt like a Baptist preacher. I was on a stump. If there was a stump in the middle of a lake somewhere, I was on it. And saying, come see me, give me a chance, there's a new sheriff in town. No pun intended, sir. But it, and you, we got the word out. And we started, and it becomes a mouth situation, a word, a word-of-mouth situation that somebody here that really cares about us, our commissioners care enough to give us someone who cares about us. So.
Well, no other questions? Mr. Stroud, I do appreciate, I think this whole board, you know, the information enlightening us, telling us a little bit more about it to help us have the discussion on this.
It's been my honor and got to spending my time researching and learning. This is a very unique, it's uniquely similar to my county. You, you have very different areas. Iredal County, I have the great, you know, they don't have the ocean, but we have Lake Norman, the inland ocean. And then we have, which send morsels of bedroom community to the Charlotte community into that lake. And the, if you're a NASCAR fan, come on down, I'll, I'll get you some good tours. And then you go into the northern Iredal County, which is very rural. The number one milk producer in the state of North Carolina. Number two in the poultry community. So very, very vastly different. And, you know, the veteran service officer has to be able to adapt and be able to speak at different education levels and eco socio-economical issues.
Okay. Well, thank you again. We appreciate your time and thank you for coming this way and talking with us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, is everybody still good here? Okay, that's fine, okay. Let's take just a quick, quick couple minutes, about five minutes before we go into the next presentation. Okay. All right, I'll be back in five minutes. With our next item with this continuation, I guess the planning staff report review. I believe this was a continuation from our last meeting to finish up.
Yes, sir. So the last time that we talked through staff reports, we got through preliminary plaits and special use permits. So we need to work through rezonings and text amendments tonight. And once again, this conversation is just to see if there are any sections that the Board of Commissioners would like to see differently in regards to staff reports that come out of the planning department for different cases that you all hear. So with that, I believe that Laurie LaCicero passed around the packet of information again. And so we'll get started on the page that is a staff report for rezoning for PB 2021. And I'll give you guys just a second to turn there.
Well, she gave us this.
She gave it to you before.
Dog Trail Solar.
If you keep flipping through, there'll be one in there that says Culpeper rezoning.
It's about halfway through your packet that I passed out.
And kind of like we did before, what we'll do is we'll work through the different sections and just see if you all have any comments or anything you'd like changed as we work through the use permit. So application summary? All right, what about request?
No, I mean, that pretty much gives us what the applicant is looking for. So, yeah, so that's, that's good information there.
All right, surrounding parcels is pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Yep.
Land use plan. So in here, we address the consistency, which we talked about in the other two sections. So this is just, one of the things that we talked through quite a bit was with the other two types of staff reports, was trying to look at all of the cases from both sides of the coin, so to speak. Looking for those consistencies and maybe given the top consistencies and inconsistencies. Would you like to see the same thing on rezonings? Or would you like to stick with focusing on consistencies or inconsistencies?
Board okay with the way it is? Okay, I guess, I guess we're good.
Hang on a second. We're not, we're in no hurry here, so I would say just.
Oh, I thought, I thought we reviewed it. But go ahead, go. We had it for a long time.
We've had it, but that doesn't mean all.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay, gotcha.
Last week was kind of a nut job week, I mean.
Okay.
All right, well, Bob's trying to find his words.
Yes, I'm just thinking of.
I'm, okay, I appreciate the thoroughness of the narrative, right? I mean, it's a lot of material. Is it that necessary? And the only reason I'm saying is, I mean, I would suggest an overview is great, right? Where, what are the moving parts? That too would be nice. But I'm not sure staff needs to write as extensive a description of what I would expect to be presented. You know what I mean? I, I mean.
So you're expecting the applicant to carry some of that water?
Yeah, applicant needs to make their case for what they're doing and how they're doing it. And, you know, yeah. The narrative should not be a stand on its own. The applicant doesn't need to say a word. And typically what happens is this, I'm not going to say that it gets read verbatim, but it gets presented darn close to every detail in that narrative. And I don't, I don't know that that's.
So some of the stuff that, for instance, is in this narrative, so you've got the zoning history of the property, which is something the applicant probably wouldn't bring to light because, you know, that's, they're more worried about their application and not the history. So maybe zoning history should be included in the narrative or not?
Does, does.
I like the more information with the narrative to me is better for me.
Yeah, I can appreciate.
The history, I think, is very important though, too, like I said, because it's something.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? If it's, wherever it's at in the county, if it's something like, well, it's surrounded, they have this, that, this, and their forty years, and this is, and that. And I'm not saying this could be the applicant coming in here applying for, you know, a business or some, if he gets in jail or something, they give a great job, I'm saying.
And the reason why I just like the more information, if I read something and I want to dig a little deeper in myself, it gives me a little opportunity to dig a little deeper than, than the day of being presented that I may not be able to, to research. Or I might not come up with something that I want to ask a question. I mean, I just like to be a little bit prepared with as much information.
I would agree. I'm, I'm a visual person, so reading this for me, this, in this particular case, is good. It spells out, there's, there's some, maybe some problematic areas as well. Or, you know, going into describing, going to GB zoning district does not get the same protection for potentially incompatible uses. Things that we don't think about every day that we work with this stuff like you guys do. So, but to Paul's point as well, it seems like we end up having you guys come up here and kind of read in what you've already presented to us, at least verbally. Maybe that's a part. I don't know that the applicant can probably adequately address what you guys have addressed in here in their summation of what their project. And most of the time, they're not good salespeople, they're not here, they don't really understand half of what they're doing anyways. You guys are probably pulling your hair out half the time when they come in anyway, so.
So, let, let me ask this, just as a conversation start. The, the history or the zoning history, why is that important? It's a loaded question.
And are you looking for an answer here or there?
I mean, I, I think it's important for us to know, like, what, you know, you're not going to let this go here. And I'm just saying it commercial, I'm just saying it commercial, probably. If it's, if it's always been this, but then we want to do this, I mean, I think knowing what's there, what's there, I mean, if we approve something.
I don't think that, when, when, when I say historical, it's, it was zoned this, now it's zoned this, and now they would like to rezone this, right?
I often prefer.
Historical, not, not you, not.
So, one, one example of where that could be important, let's say you've got a parcel and 12 years ago, it came in to be zoned from residential to GB. And it was denied and it was a, a pretty contentious case. But everybody involved is no longer here. It's good, by involved, I mean, on the board.
Right.
It's good for you all to have that history to know that at least there's the potential for some conflict in this community because we've seen that before.
Except, we all, and as staff brought out last, last meeting, right, the priorities of the board changes and, you know, and a lot of that, you know, it got denied 15, 16 years ago. Okay, well, a lot's changed in 16 years and maybe, you know, we want an increased lot size for this neighborhood, right? Or something to that effect. So, it's interesting, but I, I mean, it's, I guess, back to the more information.
I like having the narrative because when I read it before the meetings, I write down questions. And usually, when the staff gets up, I'm marking off the questions that I have that they've answered for me. And I think also, the general public needs to know some of this, too.
Excellent point.
Another reason this was, it said, 40, 2000, there was a lot of property rezoned in general business for buildings. That was the only thing they wanted rezoned for.
I don't think it hurts having it. I actually, I'm like Kitty, I like to have the background. It helps me maybe understand the history as well as ask better questions. And, you know, maybe everybody here doesn't need to read it all, but still being the newest person on the board, I find it very helpful. So, I, I like it.
I think the historical part's perfect. Like they said, too, Mr. Kitty said, I mean, write your questions down. I think it's something that the staff or for the applicant are trying to put. What I would try to bring, I mean, it's nice if you know the historic history of it.
The narrative helps generate, I agree wholeheartedly. I'd find myself reading this and that's when I start jotting notes down. So, I'd say that, that part is, to me, is maybe even more important than the narrative to fully understand what it is that I'm reading before we get to the meeting. If we haven't come in, I mean, I'll come in, obviously, from time to time and talk to staff or call them if I have a question about stuff. And I know some of the other commissioners do as well. But it definitely helps me out. I, I don't, I don't mind that at all.
Okay. Well, I mean, it sounds like from the majority of the board, like to see the, the, leave it as it is for.
Not even more detail.
One, one of the things that we had not talked about is the corral at Pops. And I call and ask, answer questions because, I mean, if I live here forever, but we have a corral, we have five, six times a year. We do it every day, four almost every day. But, you know, I said, I mean, I ask them some questions, stuff, and they pick it up. You know, but it's the same thing, I just get it back into the store.
So, for good one there, then I'm going to assume surrounding parcels were still.
That's easy.
Yeah.
I think the point of contention, when we get to land use plan, seems to be a point of contention. What for, against? We talked about having argument, you can have fun on argument for or against in most things. And how do we get past that point or not past, I don't even know if that's the right word for it, that the staff ostensibly shouldn't be for or against something. They should be looking at it and let it stand on its merit, whether it meets the land use plan, right? And the policies therein. And so, I guess the, maybe the feeling from some of the board at least is that it's not, it's leaning one way or the other. And, and if it's something that, and it's putting, and it's making us seem at odds. That's probably the bigger thing is it's making us look at odds. We, we look at the land use plan and maybe find those, those things that are support passing or changing something in this, in the reasoning in this case, where the staff has looked at it differently. And probably, maybe talking about how the staff looks at the land use plan and actually utilizes that. So, why do they derive decisions the way that they do, right? That's, they, they have a fixed set of parameters that they have to look at. And so.
Well, so, yeah, I mean, I think, I think when, when the staff looks at it, they're going to look at it as, as, you know, this is their subject matter expertise, right? I mean, this is what they do day in and day out. And so, I think, I think the, the real question that, that I'm hearing is, how do you get to, and this is what I was kind of alluding to before, this idea that there are policies that, that say that this should happen, and there are policies that say that this shouldn't happen. And what I'm hearing from the board is that the board would like to see both sides of that argument, you know, put in at least the staff report so that then commissioners can draw questions for both sides of an argument. And using this one as an example, you know, these are, under the land use plan section, these are the, these are the policies it's consistent with, within the land use plan. And so, I think what we talked about with the other, the other forms of staff reports is that what you'd like to see is maybe the top three or five, four, that, that it most closely adheres to, or maybe the most important in staff's opinion, and the three or five that it most closely or most importantly doesn't meet. And that way, you all then can, can kind of draw conclusions as the elected body. And then also, the, it, what it does is it creates that conversation that occurs through a hearing. So, you can talk to applicants and.
Well, it's, it's kind of like the planning board. Planning board has to deal with the UDO as it's written in the land use plan. Keep in mind, this land use plan was written in, what, 2006?
Six, I believe.
Things have changed, like we were talking about earlier. Boards have changed. So, it's always not quite reflective of what is on the ground today. But the staff and the planning board has to deal with the plan as it's sitting in front of them. And we do get the latitude of if it's not something that's pertinent to today, to make some changes. They don't.
That's correct. Yeah, I mean, that's exactly right. So, and, and I think sometimes that can make it feel like that.
Right. And it's, it's, that's the public perception, right? That we have, you know, that article that, I talked to Virginia Pilot a couple weeks ago, and, you know, it, it makes us look like we're possibly at odds with each other, when that's not the reality of, of what's going on in the ground. And, but that's the perception, right, that the staff recommended, don't do it. And the board voted, you know, for it. And.
I didn't sell that question.
But to Owen's point, I mean, part of that is that staff has to operate within it as it's written today.
Right.
And the board can either amend things, but.
But staff can present it objectively to let us make the decision, like Mr. White said. Don't make it look like we're going to be opposing our staff recommendations.
Well, there, I mean, so, the thing we talked about, the thing we talked about with, with the use permits and with the preliminary plat, which is also a form of use permit, is there wouldn't be staff recommendations anymore on there because of the fact that it's a quasi judicial proceeding.
Right.
Now, on legislative items like rezonings and text amendments, do you want a staff recommendation or do you not? Now, I will tell you, on text amendments, I have a pretty strong opinion, you want some kind of staff recommendation. Because we live in that ordinance all the time.
If we're not going to listen to our professionals, they're the ones who have degrees in planning and development. I don't think any of us, except maybe Paul, might have a degree in it. But that's who we need to listen to. We need to take their advice because I certainly, if they're not going to explain it to me, I'm not going to know what it is.
I don't think, I personally don't consider that it's not listening to them. I read it, talk to them. And it's, it's just, it's a different, maybe an opinion at this point. I mean, we're elected, so we're in a different realm than they are from how they have to approach stuff. And.
When I was first elected, an old commissioner told me something. He said, remember one thing. Every decision you make affects somebody's livelihood. The staff doesn't have the, I'm going to say the ability, but they don't have the reason to look at somebody's livelihood where we do.
Right.
And I'm not saying it's political because it's not. Because you don't want to make a decision that puts somebody off of their property, or they lose a business that has been in the family for years and years. It's, it's important that we have to deal with that. Staff doesn't deal with that aspect of it.
How about doing concerns then? I mean, I would like to see, instead of recommend, I'd like to see something from the staff. Maybe if we don't want to call it recommendation, then how about we do concerns and comments or something to that effect? I mean, I think they, they know that UDO better than any, well, maybe.
Maybe another one.
They know that UDO certainly much better than myself. And I, and I respect what they have to offer and the insight that they have with that knowledge. And I, I would like to see some type of direction, some type of help from the planning staff.
Well, I, I think if we, if we give you the concerns, the other thing that it does, at least for some of the hearings you have, it gives you all the ability to look at conditions in order to address those concerns.
Right.
What questions to ask to see if those concerns can, can be handled through a hearing. In some cases, even the applicant will agree to some major shift in something, and that'll address a concern.
For example, with the Baxter, one, something we did on Baxter, I don't remember what it was, but the one guy came in here. I knew it was a truck and a car and.
The landing.
And he signed up, and he didn't know that, but I would. And he signed up to clean all those digits out, and Mr. Morales' digits were mistaken a little bit, and then they did that. You know, I mean, there's some stuff where, and not, not the staff, because they are very professional and they're smart, they know their stuff. I was at that guy's house, right, at that yard, and saw a truck and a car there. So, they signed up to do it. The one lady that was in here that was adamant about something and it got denied, I don't remember what. But we put a bunch of conditions and added all kinds of extra stuff. I got a phone call the next day. And she said, I can't believe you all denied that. She was against it when she walked in here. Me and Owen put a bunch of conditions on it. Then I got a phone call. I'm like, we trying to help you. And then she was mad and didn't, you know, I mean, like you said, I mean, that's where the difference between, like Owen says, somebody lied to you. That person lives, decided, she walked in here that night, was adamant against it. We put a bunch of conditions on it. And it ended up getting denied. But she, before she left, she was fine with it. And then when she signed up, it didn't get approved because she thought this was going to get funny. So, it's, like, he made a better dotted point on that.
Well, so, so if we do concerns, like, if we take the recommendation, I'm going to jump ahead a little bit and then we'll go back. But like, if you took the recommendation section out, and you said, here are our concerns, you know, as the staff, the other thing that that lets us do, you've got a, a very experienced, very knowledgeable staff who've seen a lot of things go sideways in their career. And they can kind of give you a heads up when they've seen, you know, and that's, that's where it's, it's, yeah, it's something that happened maybe 10, 15 years ago. But we've been down this road. Here were the problems with it. Here's what we can see happening with it again. So, if, if, what we're looking to alleviate is this idea that there's a conflict that may be shifting from recommendation to concerns. And if you don't see any concerns, then you know that by and large, the staff is supportive of it as presented and.
Right. I think concerns is great. Because we're not going to know the pitfalls. That's, that's, that is a concern, a big concern. And like Kevin said, going and, and Tammy came in here right before COVID hit, and we had some kind of big discussion. There was a lot of questions on TRC. And we went through that line item to go down and make sure that her concerns were allayed and that were addressed in that process before we.
The concerns help with the question too, for, we have a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're the person bringing something that helps with what.
The worst thing that can happen is like a text amendment. We make a change and we find out, oh, oh, we did something wrong. And then have to come back and change it again. That's where the staff is very important in laying out these things. Also, under the land use plan, when we have areas where there's a small area plan, that needs to be included.
And they, they typically do, I believe. This case, I just don't think has a small area plan over that area. So, getting back to kind of land use plan consistency evaluation, if we're not going to make a recommendation, then we're not going to be looking at a case and saying, okay, here are the things that, that meet that recommendation. The reason why it meets the recommendation for approval or denial is duh, 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 which goes back to that other conversation where I said, so do you all want to see the top three or somewhere between three and five plant policies that each, that each case meets? Four, that it, it adheres to, obviously, or that are a big deal in the community and against. Because, like I said, you can find them in either way. You know, I don't think there's any case that comes in that we can say 100% of the policies are in line with this case. There's no case that comes in that says there's 100% of the policies are, you know, for it. So.
I think if we don't put them in there, if we don't know what they are, Ikey's going to be a whole lot busier.
Well, I, I also want to make sure the board understands, the staff makes recommendations to you because the UDO requires them to make recommendations to you. So, it's going to also require, if you don't want a recommendation, for the UDO to be changed. Section 2.3.5B says that the staff shall conclude whether the application complies with all applicable review standards and shall recommend one of the decisions authorized for the particular type of action. So, in the context of this rezoning, staff is required by the UDO to give you a recommendation as to whether the MAP amendment should be approved as submitted, it should be approved with a reduction in the area proposed for rezoning, it should be approved to a more restricted base zoning district, or it should be denied. So, just recognize, as, as you say, you don't want recommendations, it's going to require other text change in order for the staff not to be required to give you a recommendation as set forth in the UDO.
And one of those text amendments will be coming before the board in June?
June. Well, in 160D, we did incorporate, the 160D changes that updated the general statutes, and we have to bring our UDO into compliance with those. That's coming before you in June. In that, because it's a very large text amendment, we did go ahead and make the change regarding the use permits and not making a staff recommendation in the use permit, but outlining the concerns and comments. We're bringing, that is part of that because that was the direction we received at the retreat. So, it will be part of that. And we will, we will, there's a few other things that are not really 160D, but are we're bringing forward in that. And we will, when we go through our presentation, we'll tell you what's 160D and what are these other kind of cleanup items such as that.
So.
So, unless we make a change, we're going to have to follow what's currently written on.
Well, what, the conversation tonight will dictate whether, in the long term, staff works on a text amendment.
Okay.
To remove that, that language. So.
How long has that been part of the UDO? Is that just, is that just a common practice, Mr. McCrea?
Well, at least, I think this has been ever since this UDO was adopted effective January 1, 2013.
And is that a common practice in the counties that surround us?
In my experience of representing a number of counties and towns, it, it is the practice that staff gives some form of recommendation, except I will say, when I was Pasertank County attorney, the staff did not give any recommendation. Just kind of opened the case and then left it to the board to determine how to proceed with the matter.
With no direction.
Hopefully, your planning board has looked at it and the recommendation they give you, you can trust it.
I'll say Pasertank did not have many zoning and subdivision applications to begin with.
So, so the big question is, do we want to leave staff recommendations in or out for something like a rezoning? Or just, just pull them out for the use permits, which we're already doing? So, if we leave it in for the rest of stuff?
I prefer the recommendation in.
Yeah, let's just leave it in for now.
Okay. So, so then let me, I'm going to go, we went forward, now I'm going to go back a little bit. So, on the, on the section where we're talking about consistencies, so if staff's going to make a recommendation for or against, we are typically going to present evidence that is, that backs up that stance.
Okay.
So, is that okay?
I think it has to be.
Okay.
Because they're making a recommendation, they have to support that recommendation one way or the other. I think, but the big probably thing we were missing was it was require them to make that recommendation in the first place.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, it kind of puts it in a different light now, sitting up here that, that it's a requirement that they have that. And probably the reasons that they get to that decision is maybe.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, it kind of puts it in a different light now sitting up here that it is a requirement that they have that and probably the reasons that they get to that decision is maybe part of what was missing here, I don't know if that's the right word.
So, so what I'm hearing is then on the land use plan section or plan section, because if you've got a small area plan, it would be in there. So we're going to have either consistencies or inconsistencies based on the recommendation that's in the staff report.
One way or the other, whatever they.
And so then the applicant will, it will be the burden on the applicant. If we said recommend denial, because that's really where you get to the conflict, then the applicant will be, it will be their job to bring consistencies forward so that you all can make a determination for approval if you want to. Or the public brings in inconsistencies for denial.
But they shouldn't have put in like their concerns and all that kind of stuff.
Concerns will still be in there. Yep, so. So, and under recommendation, you know, we can, we can kind of lay out, and we've talked about this, that, and you've seen it in your staff reports where there's a recommendation and then there's, you know, but here's a way to maybe address some of the concerns so that they're not as, as big of a deal. You see it on your motion sheet as well.
Mm-hmm.
So then consistency and reasonableness statement, if we're going to make a recommendation, I think we have to, and the ordinance requires that, that section as well.
Right.
And then the planning board recommendation is pretty straightforward, so. All right.
I do like this huge chart, this comparison chart. It doesn't pop up often, but it started, I guess when they want to put the gas station, it's in the runway strip, it's a ponderosa ranch, this is the first time.
For rezonings?
Yeah, but it really helps put everything and spell it out for you, what you can and can't do.
Yeah.
I definitely like that.
Now, concerning the planning board recommendation, if their recommendation is different than what the staff recommendation, should we have an explanation of why they found the way they did?
Well, I mean, it's, I don't look at a lot of planning board minutes, so, but I believe that if they make a recommendation different, they give the policies that it is consistent with or inconsistent with.
Yeah, they would give us, just like you all have your motion sheet, we supply them with some input, some information for that. And if they choose to go against our recommendation, it would be in their motion and that's one reason that the, the motion's included in, in the report that makes it into your packet.
Now, the only thing I can say is if you would like, we could spell out, without citing the entire policy, maybe give you an idea of what those policies are. Now, obviously in this one, it's a repeat, I think, of the policies that we had listed, so. But if they are different, then we can put a little detail in there.
And we can give you, if there's a significant discussion, we can try to give you some highlights from that. This, you would be timing with when, you know, the planning board meeting and then getting everything updated and, and inputted for your, your meeting, each in the packet.
I think that's important because it makes them feel a part of everything. When I was on the planning board one year, they reversed 80% of the recommendations we sent forward and made us feel like a useless body.
Well, I think staff does a really good job on the planning board section, laying out why the planning board got to whatever decision. I mean, I think staff really is very transparent whenever, and especially if there's a difference of opinion between the planning board and the staff recommendation.
I think our planning, planning board staff too does, I mean, like, we have some good, there's a vast knowledge or, I mean, there's a good mix. I mean, I think they do a good job on what's.
Yes.
Most of the times.
So text amendments are a little unique in that the majority of the other things that we talked about come from the public in our applications. The majority of text amendments are going to be internal. It's going to be things the board wants changed or staff sees as an issue, but you do have some of the general public that come in. And so this is a good example of one that, where the general public submitted, so there's a pretty in-depth cover sheet.
Mm-hmm.
Which I think is, is necessary. I think really laying out that text amendment that way is very helpful. Because when you get to the actual text amendment, you know, what I'll call kind of more the, where you've got the heading with the staff report, you know, it goes through the language and that's, you've got consistency and reasonableness. But, but I think the bulk of it's covered in this narrative, and I don't know a better way to do a text amendment narrative than the way they do it. And like I said, now, this is the, this is the area where I will say that even if you wanted to do away with recommendations on everything else, I do not think text amendments is the place to do away with a recommendation because your staff lives every day with this ordinance and works with it every day. And so they know the, the ins and outs better than anybody else. And they're going to see those pitfalls better than anybody else.
I personally find what it's like this, I mean, I remember when we went through this one, this was well laid out, easy to read, easy to follow. It helped us understand what they were grappling with in that particular case, what's the driveways and all that stuff he was trying to get through, so.
You all said something earlier, and sorry for me for just speaking up, but you wanted to know how we get to our recommendation or how we get to those policies? And not that I want to take up all your work sessions, but would you all like a work session on, like, if a project comes in, how we work through creating a staff report and creating our analysis and, and the things that we think of and the things that we use to go through, all our checklists, all our land use plans, the small area plans, the subareas within the land use plan, the policies? We can talk about planning, we can have another work session with you all if you, if you think that would be beneficial.
I'm good with that. I mean, it wouldn't bother me a bit to walk through it. I've sat down with, with them more than one time and walked through it just for my own.
No, and I know, and there's probably some commissioners had a little more experience than others with planning, working with staff and all that, but I mean, is it something that the board would like to have, maybe a little work session to kind of review and go over everything? Never hurts to have a refresher. I think this would be a little more detailed, but yes.
We can work those two things together.
Yeah, and just put a little more detail in with what we're.
Yeah. What would be an interesting exercise is to let the board kind of work through a scenario as if you were staff and then maybe over, you know, a meal, have a conversation about how did that feel? And here's how, then this is how we do it.
Okay.
At the staff level.
With them appearing us down there.
Right. I don't look forward about that.
Y'all will, we can, we can, we can do that.
Hey, you can just pay me $144, let me get you a piece of this.
But no, seriously, I mean, maybe, you know, I think, I think let them help you guys through an, an application process, so you kind of see what that looks like.
Well.
Similar to what we're talking about with hurricane preparation.
Hurricane thing, yeah.
I think it was pressures.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Never met a thing.
All right.
Put something together and.
But yeah, instead of taking up a work session before a meeting, maybe do it.
2023, you're thinking?
No. But do it sometime a little separate from a commissioner meeting, because on days like today, I know that you guys are getting prepped for a meeting, staff's getting prepped for meetings.
Bringing some lunch, early dinner, something, let's just, yeah, we'll have a working, eating session.
Okay. All right.
The text, I mean, I'm waiting to hear from other commissioners. I mean, is everybody good with that? Or we want to move on? Are we still contemplating the text? Are we all good?
Good with the text.
Everybody good?
I'm good.
Okay.
All right, so.
All right.
I think we're at a public comment.
All right, well, we had intended to take another break before public comment. Do we still want to do that or move into public comment?
Man, you good? She said she's good.
Yeah, we're good.
We're all good? No, we're not, okay, nobody needs another break right now, or anything? Okay, great. All right. Thank you, staff for, and Mr. Seckler for getting that to us. Okay, next on the agenda is our public comment and I have no one signed up for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in public comment at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment and move into the commissioner's report. And I'm going to start off on my right with Commissioner Owen Etheridge, sir.
Very short, I'm glad the charver convenience site is now back. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner McCord.
I'd like to, just a couple of things. EMS appreciation week is this week. I work with those guys every single day. Our county is very, very lucky. We have some very high quality, qualified, whatever you want to say, EMS personnel and staff that, as well as fire, rescue, volunteer, paid, that do a great job. Last week was National Police Law Enforcement Week. We don't have police in Currituck County. If you live here and you pay taxes, you need to know that, that we don't have a police department. So we only have the sheriff's department, which we do, yeah, still.
Still don't.
Like I said, and if you've never done that job, you know, shots fired, call that guy, rides to the shot, not away from the shot, to the shot. Like I said, and it's a thankless job. There's a war on the media, there's a war on social media to defund us, to, I mean, whatever. It, you know, and it's the same ones that say that, and I'm gonna get on my soapbox for a second, that say that and they're entitled to say that because that's their free speech, but you know, if they need assistance, they're going to call us. And we're the ones that come. We don't, you call dispatch and you have a fight in progress at your house, we don't ask your political party at our 911 center, they don't ask your race, they don't ask any of those kind of questions. They send somebody to your house. Like I said, it's, this weekend was a horrific accident on the bridge where guys and gals that worked for our agency had to deal with, and I'm not going to say any names, a 17-year-old child. I received multiple calls from elected officials in the county, was, were they local? I mean, they lived in Virginia Beach, which is pretty much almost local. But I mean, like, those guys deal with that kind of stuff. To watch somebody physically, you know, had been burned up in a vehicle, the vehicle wrecked, they weren't, you know, there's rumors on social media, he was speeding, he was reckless, whatever. I mean, there was a vehicle malfunction and, you know, and the father, son, and the dad was trying to save his kid, they watched this 17-year-old kid die right in front of them. I mean, that sucks. You know, so I mean, that's the type of stuff that those guys put up with. And until you've sat in that car, put that badge on, put that gun on, and dealt with some of the stuff and, you know, respond to a suicide, respond to a child abuse, a child neglect, a sexual assault, you know, I mean, so the people on social media, and I'm, I'm not a social media fan at all. You know, until they've done that, you know, it's, the keyboard warriors out there that post all that stupid crap, and I, like I said, I paid my, my money to run and sit here, so I'm going to get on my soapbox for a second because I, because I've earned it. You know, and if they don't like it, you know, if you don't have nothing nice to say, shut up. Shut up personally and shut up on the keyboard, you know, when they say that stuff. And attack people, the stuff in Pasquetank, I worked a couple shifts over there in Elizabeth City, you know, and I mean, I haven't watched the body cam footage. Now, if it was something happened in Currituck, I have access to my position, I haven't watched it, so let the judicial process that was set up by our founding fathers go through. You know, I'm sorry, I feel sorry for the family that lost the, the Mr. Brown, you know, I, you know, I wasn't there, so I don't know. But I know a lot of the guys that were there, that are, that are good guys, that do stuff in the community, volunteer, coach, do stuff with youth, mentor, you know, and I mean, then they were threatening those guys' lives so bad and, you know, where a couple of them had to go out of town. You know, I mean, they were just doing their job, you know? But like I said, it's that and EMS, you know, I mean, we have some really, really quality people here in the county, as well as our highway patrol, wildlife, all that stuff, you know, I mean, not just, it's police week or law enforcement, whatever you want to call it, but like I said, it's, kudos to those guys, same, you know, just like anything else. That, and like I said, I mean, if you don't have nothing nice to say, don't, don't type it. Because if, you know, and most people that get on their little keyboard stuff, they wouldn't say it to your face. That's how I look at it. My least favorite people are those little keyboard warriors that would not say that to my face or somebody else's face. Not that I would, you know what I'm saying, do something to that person, but like you said, if it's, I might be thinking, I'll just go ahead and put it out there.
You might want to just shut it in.
But yeah, no, it's fine, no, it's fine. If I, if I type it, text it or fax it, I'll say it.
Mute Mike.
And I don't need a mute mic. But like you said, it is, I mean, that is just a personal thing where until you've done it, walked it, lived it, you know, and I, I can't Monday morning quarterback a fireman for something they done or an EMT because I don't do that. You know, so it's, like I said, just be kind. We live in a great place. I'm very thankful that how respected the citizens in the county are towards our EMS and first responders, as well as our dispatchers. You know, like you said, those guys, you see a lot of bad stuff. And Commissioner Payman is a volunteer fireman, he's out there seeing it. Ms. Jarvis's husband's seen it out there and retired wildlife, so it's just, like I said, just, it's easier to be nice than nasty. And I'm done with that.
Thank you, Commissioner McCord for your passion comments.
Don't you tell us what you really think.
Vice Chairman Boma.
Well, Kevin, I want to thank you for the service you do provide as law enforcement in the county. So it's not completely thankless.
I appreciate it.
But, you know, to tag team on what Commissioner McCord said, the worst half of that little accident was the second half of the family was in a trailing vehicle and watched the whole thing go down. So, and this is kind of an appeal to our local residents. You know, we can't help who travels through our county and drives and is in a hurry to try and relax and whatever, but, you know, accidents happen, that's why they're called accidents. I don't think anybody goes out to purpose to, you know, cause an accident or cause a crash, but we don't need to add to the insanity that sometimes is out there. I've seen it. Had to resist the urge to, you know, the whole road rage thing, just, you know, be a calming influence out there. People leave room between you and the car in front of you because I'm telling you, I, people lose their minds. And then when there's no gasoline to be had, it's even worse. So, but yeah, to, to, to pile on, the folks our EMS and our law enforcement do in the county, if you've not been in the field and you've not been in that type of industry, I agree, keep your mouth shut because, you know, you have no business comment. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. And I'll just comment what we're talking about, yes, I'm in the volunteer fire department, so I get those, those pages at night, during the day, the weekends. I've been on scenes on some fatalities and had to deal with that personally as a firefighter and it's, it's something you never, never, ever want to have to go through. And, and I commend the people that have to go through that and work through those and, and we're still seeing a lot of structure fires in the county. There was one last week, a lot of accidents. I mean, our, our fire department, our first responders, this past year has been the busiest and the most I've seen since I've been involved with fire departments. It's, it's, and the summer's just beginning, so as the other commissioner said, just be mindful of your surroundings, pay attention, people are in a hurry. It's a shame that, that we're having accidents, but they're going to happen and we just thank for the people involved that are, that are responding and getting, and getting things back as best they can. So just thank your volunteer, your sheriffs, your first responders, your dispatchers, they're doing everything they can out there, so if you see them, thank them. And if you can get involved again, I'm going to constantly say, get involved. And last, I'll just touch base, the COVID-19, Currituck County has a Friday's report. The lab confirmed cases in Currituck was 1,555. There was 13 active cases on Friday, 1526 have recovered and the, and the total deaths is still at 16. Any death is terrible, but at least we don't see that increase anymore. And shots are still available, contact the health department and you can get the Moderna or whatever shot, you just have to call and ask and they'll get your schedule for that accordingly. I believe it'll have the manager touch base, but I believe we're done with any mass clinics for right now, unless they.
We had one last week.
Well, but going forward, I think we're finishing that up, so. And that's all I had to say, so Commissioner White.
Thank you, sir. Not much for me, just, I just want to give a special thank you to Jack at OB Gas in Corolla. Years ago, when they set that gas station up, they had an idea to make sure that they would always have gas on hand. So last week, when we had this shortage and running the gas stations, he kept enough gas to make sure the county operated over there to make sure our inspections were going, EMS, fire trucks. over there, to make sure our inspections were going, EMS, fire trucks had diesel, police were good to go, Sheriff's Department, since we don't have a police department yet in this county. And so, he limited it $25 a person to make sure that pretty much everybody got something and could get somewhere. With today's cars, that's probably a couple hundred miles out of $20 worth of gas. So, you know, that, that really was a thankless job. He was out there all day long directing traffic through the parking lot. It was pandemonium. So, just want to say thanks to Jack and Kevin. I did wear the, wear the uniform for four years. A little over that actually accounted for my federal service outside of the military. So, I do know what you got. My first call, you reminded me of that, was when my field training officer cut me loose, was a, was a vehicle fatality. That was the very first call I had to go to. And it is something no one ever wants to see or have to deal with, but it is part of our lives. And so, thanks for everything you've done for us and the rest of deputies in this county, and everyone that continues to serve this community. And that's it for me. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Friday, the Currituck County Department of Social Service will be holding a private memorial service for Amanda Wood and her daughter, Rayanne, who were killed in an automobile accident on March 21st. Ms. Wood had worked in child welfare for over 17 years, and at her death, she was working in Currituck's foster care unit. She was an expert in adoption and always will be remembered for her grace, compassion, and kindness. On behalf of Currituck County, we celebrate the life of Amanda Wood and her service to our county and to the children of the Alamo Mall region. May her memory live on for the many lives of the children she has served. God bless her family, her coworkers, and her friends. Thank you.
Ms. Katie, what was the date and time of that again? Could you say?
It's gonna be Friday.
Thank you, Commissioner Etheridge. Commissioner Jarvis.
Well, I'm not gonna be redundant. I had comments about EMS and Law Enforcement Week. I just want to say, we are blessed, we are lucky, and I thank God that he landed me here in Currituck County. And that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. We're now at the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. At the direction of the board, I've reached out a couple of times to NC DOT to see if we can get them scheduled for a work session, or at least administrative report to come here. I've yet to hear back from those folks, so I'm gonna start to work through other sources of contact and find someone who can, who can come here. The subject matter, first and foremost, will be traffic safety on the highway and talk through, you know, what we've got going on. We've heard and alluded to that we've got a highway that at times can have some pretty bad accidents or numerous accidents. And so, DOT is aware of that, but we want to hear kind of from them, and I know there's specific questions that certain commissioners have about different sections of road in our county. So, we're still working to get that scheduled. Construction projects are moving forward. Shingle Landing Park is very close to opening. Obviously, when we get ready to open that, we'll have some kind of ceremony with the Board of Commissioners, ribbon cutting of some kind. Up then, up next will be Maritime Museum, that's moving forward. Exhibits will be installed, start being installed in the next week. And then, finally, the Public Safety Building is still on track for a substantial completion date of the building of July 15th. And then after that, we'll start moving furniture and other fixtures in. So, we should definitely have that open in time for the fall semester for COA, and also get some departments moved in there as we kind of wind down the season. So, it's, we are in the middle of tour season. I know it's not Memorial Day yet, but the numbers are up. We're seeing it in our water plant. We're seeing it on the roads. We're seeing it with our different staff over there. So, you know, just encourage everybody to be safe as they travel. Also, in response to the changes that have been made through the executive order with the governor and the different mandates, we'll start seeing operational changes in different county departments, where if there's a public-facing department, masks not being required, specifically one that comes to mind is our senior center. So, we'll start to move to a mask recommended policy. If somebody wants to wear it, that's fine. If they don't, that's not an issue. As well as you'll start to see some changes in some of our meeting rooms as the minimum social distance requirement has shrunk, and so we'll be able to fit more people in this room and other rooms as we move forward. Be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
I do have a question on the COVID clinics. As Chairman Payton made a comment, the, I had a couple of phone calls today, and I know the Health Department is limited staff. I've worked with them at the COVID clinics that we've had, the mass ones, every one of them, I think, but two. The, I had some calls, and I know, like you said, they don't have a lot of staff. Is our call center still open on that, or is it all just them?
It's all just them. Our call center shut down probably the third week of March, because those, those staff are tourism staff. And so, as we start to stand up staff and visitor centers and do those trainings, we have to move them into that role. And so, we wound that down. At the time, there weren't a ton of phone calls coming in, because we, if you remember Commissioner McCord, we'd started to kind of, that was the end of the mass clinics for us, the first dose, second doses were just running a little smoother, and, like I said, we needed those resources somewhere else in the county. If the Health Department needs a call center, if they'll reach out, we'll be happy to provide that. I have had conversations with other commissioners about somebody who struggled to get in touch. If you've got those individuals, you can call me, if, Commissioner McCord, if you'll call me, give me their name and contact, I'll make sure to forward that to the staff at our local Health Department, so they can get up with them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cyclo. Next is our county attorney's report.
Good afternoonish. I want to do two things with this report tonight. I wanted to highlight for you the county attorney's office representation of the tax collector, and then, secondly, bring you up to date on two cases. I will give you a more detailed report at your next meeting on all the pending litigation that the county is involved in. As I mentioned to you in my first report to the board, part of the responsibility of the county attorney is to represent and advise all county agencies and departments. That includes the Tax Department, and in particular, its tax collection efforts. Under North Carolina law, this board, first of all, orders the tax collector each year to use all legal means necessary in order to collect outstanding taxes owed to the county. Under North Carolina law, that includes attachment of bank accounts. That includes attachment and seizure of personal property. It can include cars, other personal property. Garnishment of wages, if the tax collector knows where someone works, can issue an order of garnishment to the employer of that taxpayer, and the employer is required to send to the county, until the taxes are paid, 10% of each, that employee's taxpayer's paycheck, or the employer becomes personally liable and responsible for those taxes. And then, lastly, the method we utilize in extreme is in-room foreclosure, meaning that the county will actually sell an individual's real property in order to collect the taxes owed to the county. One of the most important tools in tax collection, though, is actually persuasion. And so, I know the tax office spends a lot of time calling delinquent taxpayers, trying to encourage them to voluntarily pay their taxes, trying to put them on payment plans that are reasonable, sometimes perhaps too reasonable, in order to allow for them to, to meet their civic obligation and pay their taxes, like the other fellow citizens are paying. When it comes to the point that persons are not responding to those efforts by the Tax Department, the Tax Department then will send over to my office those taxpayers that need a little bit more persuasion. And so, we will start that typically with a letter from me, and often, a 55-cent first-class letter will get a good response and take care of that tax matter. But usually, when it comes to my office, we're at the point of going to in-room foreclosure or sell the taxpayer's property. That is a labor-intensive project and operation. In fact, much of my paralegal Sandy Salam being's time is spent working with the Tax Department and working in the in-room foreclosure method of collecting taxes. It's time, it takes a lot of time because, first of all, it requires a title search of each parcel of property that we are seeking to collect taxes from. A title search reveals not only the owner or owners, but also reveals any lien holders, because under North Carolina law, the lien holders must also ultimately receive a notice of the delinquent tax and the consequence of sale of the property. They are given that notice in order that the lien holder can, if they desire, pay the outstanding tax and preserve their lien. Often, banks or lien holders that will receive that notice, many times, the banks will go ahead and pay that tax, and they will then initiate their own foreclosure proceedings against the taxpayer who has violated the terms of their mortgage. Once the title search is complete, and that can be very difficult, because recently Sandy had a matter she was working through that had 58 heirs to the property spread out all over the country, and so that takes a lot of effort and energy, because you have to give them notice or make every effort to give them notice through a letter, or through at least publication in the newspaper, of what process is about to occur regarding their property. Once the notice procedure is gone through, there is then is a requirement for a judgment to be filed with the clerk of court, and 90 days thereafter, an execution can be issued by the clerk that orders the sheriff to move forward to sell the property. That requires another round of notice to the taxpayer and the lien holders of the imminent sale. The sale then takes place, held by the sheriff at the courthouse door, and then it goes through an upset bid period, which we had one recently that went through many rounds of upset bids, until finally there was a final bid that was accepted. From that bid, the county's taxes and expenses and costs for the collection effort were paid. The remainder of those funds are held by the clerk of court until the taxpayer comes forward and shows that they are due and owed those additional funds. And then, finally, a sheriff's deed is prepared by my office, and the sheriff executes that and conveys the property to the successful purchaser or bidder. And the whole reason behind this process is to, again, get the tax, the property back on the tax rolls and in the hands of someone who's going to, again, meet their civic obligation and pay the taxes in a timely manner. As of today, the county is, has $984,142.72 in delinquent taxes. The highest delinquency is a taxpayer that owes the county $88,000. That one, as you can imagine, is now in my office as we're beginning this process. There are 39 cases, case files that are now in my office being worked through by paralegal Sandy Salam being, that are in various stages of process. Five of those are to the point now they will be going up for sale in October. The other important thing to understand is that the taxpayer has, even up until 10 days after the sale is finalized, to come in and pay their taxes and all the county's expenses that were required to collect these taxes. So, there's ample opportunity for a taxpayer to try to work through their tax issue. With regard to case update, I received a docket from the North Carolina Court of Appeals last week that the 85 in Sunny versus Currituck County matter, that's the Hampton Lodge campground, or KOA campground matter, is going to be heard without oral argument on June 8th in Raleigh. What that means is that the attorneys are not to report and to argue orally, that the court will be deciding the matter on the briefs. And that usually indicates, except perhaps during this time of COVID, where they have had fewer oral arguments, obviously, but that usually indicates that the judges really have no outstanding issues or questions they need clarified by the attorneys. As is the practice of the Court of Appeals, they used to anyway, typically tried to get an opinion out within 90 days of the date that they consider the matter, but there is certainly no requirement that they, they do it within 90 days, because, as we may remember, the Latandra matter, the last time the Court of Appeals took about a year and a half for us to receive that opinion, which was in favor of the county. And then, secondly, I want to bring up and report to you about the Paradise Homes matter. We know that is a heck of an eyesore on the Keratuck Highway. For those that might be watching and don't know where this is, this is the dilapidated, abandoned manufactured home park in Jarvisburg. It's been there for quite many years, and it took a while for us to finally determine a strategy that we could, we could finally get to the point of being able to take necessary steps to abate that nuisance and to abate the zoning violation that exists on that property. During the course of that, notices of violation in the amount of civic, civil citations and the amount of $4,000 were actually issued against the property owner, which then culminated in the filing of a lawsuit at the end of last year against the property owner and against the company, Paradise Homes of North Carolina Incorporated. The, although the property owner and owner of the company did call me, and we had several nice conversations, he obviously was unwilling, or unwilling or unable to do what he needed to do to abate his nuisance and violations. He did not respond to the complaint, so ultimately, we had default entered by the court, and the default judgment that was entered in early December of last year. That default judgment gave this property owner and owner of Paradise Homes until January 31st of this year to himself, take steps necessary to come into compliance, and upon his failure to do so, authorize the county to go upon his property to abate the nuisance and the violations, and to place a lien on his property for the county to recover its costs to do that. We are now in that process where the county is going to have to do it. And so, the first step, hopefully, to get a unit off of there more readily, and it's the best unit, according to our building inspectors, that exists on the property.
Get the trees out of this.
And we have had, we have had some interest, a lot of interest from the public wanting to buy, and I'm sure, I'm sure that the defendant in this case is wondering where they all were when he was in business. But, so, what we were in the process of doing now is having a writ of execution issued by the clerk of court that will then order the sheriff to seize, and we've identified the best unit, to levy on that unit and to proceed to sell that unit. So, hopefully, some member of the public here will be able to purchase and move that unit from the property. From the proceeds of that sale, we will, we will take the first $4,000 to pay the county's civil citation judgment. And then, we're now continuing to work, and will work, on a plan that the county's gonna have to implement and see through to completion, to remove the remaining eight units from the property and to bring it into compliance. As I said a moment ago, we'll then place a lien upon the property, which the county will then be able to recover by selling the property, ultimately, again, to someone who is going to make the proper use of that property.
How many acres is that property, if I may ask?
It's two, it's two separate lots, actually. I don't recall right offhand the acreage. The building inspectors have all, have gone in and looked at every unit, have taken pictures of every unit. As you can imagine, some are in no condition to ever be used for anything other than thrown into a dump. There are, interestingly, some appliances, Jacuzzis, that may be salvageable, and that will be one of the requirements that the county will have to go through as we seek to remove these units, is we have to pull aside all the salvageable property and attempt to sell that, because that then becomes a credit to the property owner, the defendant in this case, that will be applied to any proceeds owed to the county.
Now that you've let the public know that there's appliances in there, I don't think you'll have a problem getting rid of those appliances. Somebody will help get those out of there for you.
How about the two units on East Church?
Well, that's gonna be the next matter with this particular defendant. I need to work again with the building inspector. Chief Building Inspector, he, years ago, I think, had started a matter against those units as being residential dwellings unfit for human habitation. For whatever reason, that, that process wasn't completed, but we're recognizing that there's a need to go ahead and reinitiate that, that project as well.
One quick note, if you want to comment, as you can on it, just on Facebook, happened to see somebody was looking for a place to put a camper, and they said there's a camper lot for rent in Poplar Branch, if they're interested, on that, behind the trailer that was hit.
Oh.
Yeah, so they said there's a camper site available in that location. I'm thinking, I wanted to reply back, but, yeah, it shouldn't be.
Right, well, that's, that's another, it became a complicated matter. First of all, with regard to the damaged mobile home, we, the county initiated action to have that... to have that unit moved from the property because it is dilapidated, unfit for human habitation. In fact, the insurance company totaled it. We understand paid the mobile home park owner the amount due for what value remained for that unit. The insurance company then had a company go down to remove it from the property because having paid for it, the insurance company owned it. The property owner threatened the company with trespass if they came on to remove the unit. Insurance companies had to file a lawsuit against the mobile home park owner, which this all happened, was happening pre-COVID. I know that it was on a calendar in Pasotank County Superior Court at its last session last month, and we're trying to follow up with the clerk of court's office to see if the court's order has been entered yet. The insurance company was, of course, seeking an order from the court to allow them to go upon the property to remove that unit. There's also the ongoing violation, I believe is still ongoing, of one or maybe two campers that had been pulled into that property. The county had initiated action pre-COVID on that matter. The property owner hired an attorney and was challenging the county's actions in court. That attorney has since withdrawn from representing the mobile home park owner. And any type of agreement from my point of view on giving an additional time for the property owner to go through an administrative appeal process has long since expired. And so we'll be moving back into taking appropriate action to cause compliance with the UDO that prohibits camping campsites in particular in that mobile home park.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Mr. McCree, okay, next on the item is administrative reports. And the item on there is the annual budget presentation for FY 2021-22. And our county manager, I'm sure, has that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, board, as we go through this, there's a, there's a lot in this budget, and there was a lot of thought that went into it, trying to plan for the future. So you're going to, you're going to see in this budget a lot of things that are in here to try to prepare Currituck County for the next three to five years, in some case 10 years. There's some highlights as we go through. And it's a, it's a big year. We've had a revale, so we've got to take a look at tax rate. And then we also had a rate study on the utilities that will drive at least the general fund portion of the conversation. So obviously, annual balanced budget, so the statute requires that we operate under an annual balanced budget. We have to have that adopted by June 30th, and then we have to operate under that budget. It has to be a balanced budget, which is why you all see budget amendments in front of you at each meeting. As we go through, and operationally, we need money in different places. We have to actually get approval from the Board of Commissioners in order to spend money in different ways than it was adopted in the original budget ordinance. It is one of the major responsibilities of the Board of Commissioners to establish this budget, is the overall fiscal policy for Currituck County for the next year. You all have three budgets that you officially adopt. You have the county budget, you have the Tourism Development Authority budget, and the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District budget, and we'll be doing all three of those presentations tonight. There's 27 individual fund budgets that are in the county budget. And what people think of that, it's everything from, you know, the general fund to service districts to construction funds to fiscal funds that we have to hold in order to be prepared to do a revale. There's a whole fund that all it does is help guarantee the county has saved money to be able to do the next revaluation in eight years. The one that everybody thinks about and talks about, however, is the general fund. So this is the fund where most county departments live. It's the fund where we fund education. It's the fund that we use to fund law enforcement, EMS services, volunteer fire departments, county manager's office, county attorney's office, DSS. All those departments that people think of when they think of county government typically live here, the exception being your utilities, which are water and sewer, and we'll get into those a little bit later. So the main point with the budget, I said that we did a revaluation. The manager's recommended budget is recommending a tax rate of 46 cents. That's a two cent tax rate reduction. However, with the revale, our revenue neutral rate would be 41.43 cents. And so what that means is that if Currituck County wanted to collect the same amount of money next year in property taxes as it collected this year with the annual increase that we see of somewhere between 2% to 3%, then we would set a tax rate at 41.43 cents. My recommendation is to drop it only to 46 cents. The reason for that and the bulk of that is that we have educational needs in our community. We've got a pretty large unfunded state mandate through the classroom size reduction that the General Assembly has passed on to counties. We've got to hire roughly 12 teachers to be able to meet those requirements. We also have seen a lot of growth in the county. And so as we've bought land for a new school, as we prepare to build a new school, which is going to take place over the next couple of years, instead of lowering the tax rate for a year and then having to come back and increase it to pay for the debt service on that new school, my recommendation is to stay at 46. It does a couple of things. It allows us to save money for the new school, to lower the amount of money that we have to borrow, and it also keeps the tax rate stable as we move through those next couple of years. There's also, some of that money will be dedicated to the operational costs of the new school. As you all are very familiar, and I know the school system is very familiar, when you open a new school, the state will support teacher salaries for that new school, but there are a lot of things that need to be funded other than teacher salaries. There's things like assistant principal salaries, utilities, custodial staff, just other operational costs, nutrition staff and other operational costs that run around $750,000. So instead of, once again, lowering the tax rate, if we hold the tax rate where we can absorb that cost in two to three years, then that will allow Currituck County to be able to pay down the money that we would have to borrow and will also allow us not to have to raise the tax rate as we move forward. The overall increase in the net general fund budget is 2.2%. And so the bulk of that increase is due to the increased educational needs. There is also a small portion of that that is being reserved for the school system to fund some positions that you all on the school board had conversations about to help improve the educational opportunities in Currituck County, those being instructional aides and curriculum coaches.
So, Mr. Stackwell, there, I think you hit on something, and I just want to bring out the importance of it. When you're talking about going from revenue neutral rate to 46 cents, basically 100% of that money is just for our educational system. We are not using that for anything else in the county. Is that correct?
That's correct. The number that it comes out to is approximately $3.6 million is the difference between revenue neutral and 46 cents. And 3.542 is what will go to education. I mean, it's, it is the large bulk of that. And we're preparing some information for the public to kind of lay out how that's going to work and what it's for. It's, you know, it, like I said, there's about, there's a large portion of it that's due to unfunded state mandates. The largest portion is just due to the growth that the county has seen and the need for more elementary school space. So that when I talk about a new school, what we're talking about is the elementary school that would be constructed and built on the property that we're currently under contract on, on Poles Creek Road.
And so if we didn't do this right now, one of the goals, I think, that I wanted to highlight as well is that this is about saving money to put towards a new school. If we went revenue neutral, we would have to come back to taxpayers in a year or less or more and ask for more money, and then come back again and ask for more money, and just kind of keep going back to the well. And part of this, I think, as well is to make sure that people understand that while we're doing this, the money that we're going to borrow, we're not going to pay more interest on a higher debt load down the road. So this is planning for that debt load in the future. And I believe in our discussions, you brought up the fact that at 46 cents, you felt pretty comfortable that on that future debt load, we can manage that debt load as well within that tax rate without coming back to the well again.
I believe we should be, we will be able to manage the debt for the tax rate, the debt for the new school as well as the operational costs for the new school under 46 cent tax rate. And also the unfunded state mandate and the portion that you all talked about with the school board that you wanted to fund for increased educational.
And I know you talked about this was for the school expansions and the new school. And if memory serves me correctly, about five, six years ago, or five, we were given a presentation that a study was done for the school systems that said that this was a timeframe, we would be expected to expand or build new schools based on the data that was only in place years ago. I mean, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, so there was the study that was done 10 years ago that talked about that you would be looking at some new school in the future. I know that previous county manager in the year before he left, I think, had conversations with the board, both boards, Board of Commissioners and Board of Education about that we were kind of at a point when we needed to start really considering a school location and then move into some kind of school design. You know, we've been looking for a property for the new school for the last year and a half, maybe two years even at this point. And so it might have even moved quicker if we had had land that we could have accessed more readily. So it's, you know, we've got Moyoc Elementary School that is working in mobile classrooms and will work in those. We'll have an expansion done that we're going to pay for with cash that will help alleviate some of that, some of that crowding. But then if everything works out, and you're asking me to look into a crystal ball here, and so I'm a little uncomfortable, but if the population continues to grow the way that it has, once the new school opens, you'll have three schools with, you know, 650 to 750 capacity, and all three of those schools will be sitting somewhere around 500 students, depending on how they draw district lines, and that's not our, our job. But the point being that, you know, there is this need for additional educational capacity in Moyoc. So even if we don't increase the tax rate this year, I'm confident that we'll have to, in two years in order to cover it. I know there was some conversation about different revenue streams that might be able to pay for a school. You know, we had a conversation with the school board, and transfer tax came up as an example. We are seeing very healthy transfer tax revenues come in because of the home sales that are occurring on the Outer Banks and on the Mainland. If you're going to take on debt service, which we will have to, you know, I would not recommend using transfer tax to stand up too much debt service. There are other communities that have had issues with that because it is a variable revenue stream, depending on home sales, whereas property tax is very stable. And I think most financial professionals would agree that funding debt with that stable property tax revenue is superior to the variable transfer tax.
You're talking about other revenues, but the Haskill 704, where, when I was reading it, it said that 94% of the counties do not levy the quarter percent that they can towards public transportation, which we don't have in our county. So we could take that and use that for school, plus the other, what, is it a half a cent you can raise the sales tax? Or was it a cent?
Well, I think that there's, there's a, there's a half, I think we've got a quarter penny, but I think the, I think the bill would allow you to go up to a half penny, and then it could be dedicated towards educational capacity. I'm going to spin and look at my expert in the back of the room and ask her what a half penny on sales tax would generate if you could ballpark.
Corner ground.
Okay, so, so, so an extra half penny is about, you said 600,000. So $600,000 is what a half penny generates. The debt service that I'm projecting for the school is 1.6 million a year. So it could cover some of it.
But when you read the bill, though, it also says you can take the quarter cent that you're not using and put that towards schools if you want to. Since we're not levying a quarter of a cent towards public transportation, that can be used, that was in the House bill.
So even if you had three quarters of a penny, yeah, so even if you had the three quarters, you're still going to fall somewhat short of a potential. But now, having said that, let me say this. Let's say that that bill makes it through the General Assembly, which maybe it will, maybe it won't, but I'm hopeful that it will. And then we can get it on a ballot because I think that it has to be voted on in a referendum. So if it gets passed and the board agreed to put that on a referendum, that would be in, you know, next year, in calendar year 22, it could go on the ballot. So if it's passed on the ballot in '22, then in FY '23, you would actually start, I believe, to collect it. You know, what I'm suggesting, if we have revenues that come up, if the legislature changes something, another good example is if the legislature comes up with a way to fund schools in Currituck County. And I think that's a travesty that, you know, our neighbor Camden County, that's also a tier three county, got $12 million to put towards the school, all because their statistics were slightly different the year before. And Currituck County can't get help from the state government to build schools. If any of those things come back, we'll definitely, I as your manager, as we head into another budget season, we'll take a look at what those revenues are and see if there's any way to get closer to revenue neutral. I think that, I think it's, as your manager, my recommendation would be to go with a 46 cent tax rate in anticipation that no help comes. And if help comes, then we can go down.
What, would it to fund the unfunded mandates? Is that two cents?
It's, so to do the unfunded mandates is around a penny. And then to fund the section that, you know, the TAs and the curriculum coaches is about another penny, so it's around two pennies. 43 cents would get us close to those things. So then the other six cents are for capital for the new school. And these are general, I mean, I'm not giving, you know, if somebody does the math, it's not going to come out exactly right. But the other three cents are for the capital cost, the potential debt service cost for a school, and the operational cost once that school opens. So with the sales tax, even if you did that, even if a sales tax came through and the state gave us money to fund the school, or transfer tax can make up the difference, we still have to absorb the operational cost of the new school. I don't know, I haven't, I don't remember in that bill if it allows you to use that sales tax for operational or not. A lot of times, I know the other sales tax, it's cap, it's designated for capital, but...
Also, with that unfunded mandate of teachers is the need for classrooms.
There are.
And it's driving classroom numbers.
There are. And in large populated counties like Wake County, Durham County, Mecklenburg County, they're having to build entire schools just to absorb that, that class size reduction.
Keyword, schools, not schools.
Correct. Yes, sir.
I mean, the other thing, like, and I'd like to notate if anybody's watching at home, if, I mean, some people like live to watch this. I'm just kidding. Our tax rate, and we have this conversation, what are we, number 10 out of 100 counties?
We're actually, with a 46 cent six tax rate, will be the ninth lowest in the state, tied with Cherokee County.
Not 10.
Don't spoil it. I think I've got that later somewhere in the slides, too. This is slide one of 43.
Oh, sorry.
Forty-three.
Forty-three.
Ten slide roll.
Not for the budget.
Let's just say it's been 25 years since this county looked at a tax rate increase.
Yeah. And what I've done is everything in my power as your manager to keep that, that tax, when we're looking at the things that we fund as the county government, if we went revenue neutral, we could do that. The education system needs this money, one, because the state is telling us we have to give it to them, and two, we've got growth in Currituck County. And I would look to members of the board who know this better than I do. I would imagine in Currituck County, a lot of times what you've seen is when the tax rate changes, it is to fund some kind of education facility. And that's typically, I mean, if you look at Camden County next door, I mean, they're looking at a 13 cent tax increase to fund their education construction next year. I mean, and that's on top of the 12 million that they got.
And in Lisbon City, I think they proposed like 11 cent.
Yeah.
We're actually, we're going down to.
And there's a, yeah, I mean, so I want, I want everybody that's watching, everybody that watches in the future and the board to know, you know, with the manager, I think that probably one of the most serious recommendations that I can make is a tax rate, other than revenue neutral and a revalue, or going up on a tax rate in a year that's not a revalue year. And I don't do it lightly. This is something that I've had quite a bit of contemplation and stress over, because I get it, it impacts people's, all the things in here that are going to impact folks and their monthly budget, they're going to impact my monthly budget the same way. I'm a citizen here and will pay some of these increases that I'm talking about. So it, you know, but when I look at the county that we're in and the situation we're in, I think that what the 46 cent tax rate does for Currituck County is to start to put us ahead of the curve a little bit and help us prepare for the next thing, instead of waiting for the next thing to come to us. And the same can be said for the other increases that you're going to see recommended in this budget. I think it's trying to be forward-thinking and take things, you know, a couple of years before they hit us as best we can. Like I said, I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm doing the best I can to keep our operational costs low, operational costs low, and where we have to spend money, spend money.
I'll tell you, it's a long way from years ago when it was over a dollar. I'm going to tell you, it's a long ways from years ago when it was over a dollar. I'm going to tell you, in Currituck County, I lived here, it was like a dollar 10 or 20 at one time. And I'm going to tell you what, 46 cent is still to me is, hold accounts.
Name cheap compared to where I'm, my home in Richmond.
What's that?
My home in Chesterfield. It's, it's a lot cheaper than what I lived there.
I'm going to tell you what, I just, I don't miss that dollar day.
You've got to look at your valuations too.
Yeah, the valuations have gone up, yeah.
Well, that's what's helped.
Yeah, yeah. People build when they expand their homes or, yeah, I mean, they make investments, that property values go up and you're right, and they go down, but you're right, it's, it's constantly adjusting. But to be able to drop the rate and take care of our school systems and the needs and, and still go down and be in the top 10, I mean, that's, to me, I think that says something for, for Currituck.
I've, I've kind of said these things already. You know, the, the priority for the general fund budget this year is that focus on education. And, and once again, it's not that the school system came, came to us and came to me and with a handout and said, hey, we need money. You've got an unfunded state mandate that's a large part of it. You've got the growth in the county driving the capital needs. They did come with some requests to the commissioners and, and those things are things that they're going to show through statistics that prove that the educational quality where those things have an impact are, are actually seen over the next two to three years. So I, I think that that's a, that's a good thing as well. So tax base evaluation as we head in, you see that, that increase. For some reason, the line's not showing up. The line moved like this and I don't know why it didn't come in on this slide and that's irritating. But as you see the reval year, it jumps up.
There it is.
There you go.
On the next one.
This is the breakdown of tax base by region. And so I, I do want to point out one kind of, it's a minor number change, but it is a, a difference than we've seen here for the last 30 plus years. For the first time in 30 plus years, the majority of the tax base in Currituck County resides on the mainland. And that's a shift from how it's been, as you can see, over the years. And so as we went through the revale process and the number of new homes that have been built and the commercial investments that we've seen over the last, last couple of years, you can see that, you know, you've, you've, you've got that diversity and, and as your manager, I like that because, you know, as you've got those different tax bases, it means that, you know, if you look back in, in 2011 and 12, I mean, if you had had a, a major storm in that year, well, that, you know, that sinks a battleship, so to speak. I mean, now that we've got some diversity, it, it gives as a manager more comfort from different market volatilities, plus very different housing markets on the Outer Banks versus the housing market on the mainland.
Well, I would say too, that you look at the potential commercial growth and people that are now looking in mainland, I think you're going to see that number change even more to the mainland supporting the Outer Banks.
You will. I mean, and, and just as one example of that, we have sold our first lot in our commerce park. I mean, and, and that's just one example. I mean, so there are people making commercial investments in Currituck County all the way up and down the corridor. I mean, I, obviously there's things that are happening in Moyoc, in the middle of the county, we've got the laundry facility and then the distillery down in the southern end.
Don't forget tractor supply.
Sewer plant in Moyoc, we're going to see commercial change again, you know?
To speak to that point, to speak to that point, you know, as, as we move through getting that commercial or the sewer plant change made to get more capacity, we had that 7,000 gallons of capacity available for assignment in January, I think, of this year. And as of two week, or last week, we, we've had somebody speak for the last gallons available. So I mean, there's, there are things that are really just waiting for infrastructure. So, and we're doing our best to bring them online as quickly as possible. I will say COVID is a challenge with that because of the nature of trying to get equipment and electrical components and all that stuff. Your countywide property tax rate just kind of showing you a historical trend over the last 10 years. And where you see where it went from 32 to 48, that was a revale. It went from 48 and a half to 48. I can't speak to that, but that wasn't a revale decision. I don't know if that was from. Here's the chart that you were talking about Commissioner McCord. These are the tax rates. There's your five lowest counties in the entire state and your five highest. The state average is .6755 and with a 46 cent tax rate, Currituck County would be the ninth lowest in the state, like I said, tied with Cherokee.
A lot of those counties, we're, we have no, where it's all unincorporated.
Oh, all of those have.
They have towns, the cities and everything else.
Yeah, myself and, and the assistant of the county manager, we're looking at a map. I mean, Carteret County, most of it's incorporated. You know, that's Morehead City, I mean, Atlantic Beach.
Yeah.
There's two, I mean, because Camden's unified government, there's two.
Hyde, I believe is the other one.
Hyde and us are the only two that aren't, have not incorporated.
So I mean, obviously Dare County is full of municipalities and Swainmaken and Jackson all have municipa, they're either, and those are either municipalities. I mean, so I'm going to, I'm going to just point out a difference because I'm a local government nerd a little bit, but.
A lot.
A lot. Dare County and those mountain counties, they've got a lot of national forest land, national park land, and so they don't have some of the lands that we have to provide service to. And now while Dare County definitely has geographical challenges like we do, those other counties, Swainmaken and Jackson, their whole population lives in two or three towns and it's surrounded by national forest land. So they don't have a lot of services they need to provide, plus all those residents are paying an additional 20 to 30 cents on top of the rate that you see there.
Whatever they're paying to the town.
Yep.
Oh, that's right. Got about that.
Top 10.
So once again, you can see there's your average tax rate charted since 2002 and what Currituck's tax rate has done the same time period. Here is a, here's this chart that, that shows you as you go through, there's that dollar and 78 cent tax rate. And then you'll see we, we flatten out and, you know, other than revales and that one half a cent change that you had, we've stayed fairly stable. The one thing I will say, a stable tax rate helps commercial and economic development because when you, when you have a reputation for having a stable tax rate, when people want to make investments.
Take a forecast.
Well, and, and a good example, it's not a commercial necessarily, we've got some interest in the airport bringing, building ground lease hangers. So these are for people to keep their personal airplanes in our facilities, but those airplanes have high tax value. So, but they're not going to make a 30-year investment for a building if they think that the tax rate is going to fluctuate year to year. They like to see that stable tax rate. And it, so it, there are a lot of things that go into investment. I don't want to sit here and say a stable tax rate is the only one. I mean, that's, that would be disingenuine, but it is one thing that people look at when they look to locate corporations and commercial development in the county. So property tax collections, you'll see the increase there. It's, it's basically because of the revale and holding the 46 cent tax rate instead of going to 41, 43. This is the, the line that I, I kind of give you all the same speech every year. We don't want to see the purple line hit the red line. We always want to see that our spending has been less than our budget. And what that means is at the end of the year, we've put money aside. So what you see there, the wider that gap, the more money that we've been able to, to kind of put in our reserve account for a rainy day. And so it lags a little because we don't do the actual until we've got audited numbers in. But I mean, that, that speaks a lot to your staff and your department heads who don't go out and spend every single penny that they have to spend. That's what that shows you. That they, they, while they might ask for something in the budget, the money's not spent unless it's truly needed. And so they deserve a lot of credit for that. So I, I think that it's one thing to recognize that the, to recognize that, that you all give them the tools they need to do the job that they need to do. I think equally we should recognize that, you know, fiscal conservative conservatism starts at the staff level in a way because they're the ones who, who need to be good stewards and that, that permeates from the top all the way down to an organization. Here's your percentage of, of different sources of revenue. Obviously property tax is the big one for us. Then you've got miscellaneous and other taxes, the sales tax. We do have fund balance at 7.17%. I can tell you that we always budget fund balance and I, we haven't spent it in my three years here. I think it's been budgeted for many years and it's never touched. And so that's, you know, what we see is once again, we, we really underestimate our revenues as well. We try to be as conservative as possible on that.
Keeps you out of trouble.
So this, this is what you're looking at. So your actual tax revenue sits right here. So you can't budget 100% tax collection because the county attorney so eloquently alluded to earlier, collections is never 100% successful. But 98.43%, it's getting awful close, so.
I can tell you that's a lot better. When I came on the board in 1994, it was 93, 92%. So hats off to everybody.
So these are, these are the, the actual different things that we see revenue come from. So property taxes, sales tax, transfer tax, occupancy tax, you know, fund balance there and then DSS administration. DSS administration is the state or federal money that's passed down to Currituck County to run that department. High chart with the, the way that we spend our money, public safety is still the big spend, education is number two. General governmental is, is everything from administration, legal, IT, HR, tax, public works. So culture and recreation is parks and recreation, those kind of departments. Human services is DSS. Community development is planning, other things of that nature.
So how do we stack up debt management wise? I mean, this county's been very good about not taking on a lot of debt, I would imagine, against some of the counties.
The, the only debt that you see sitting right there is the public safety building, which is a 10-year note. I mean, there are counties that are sitting out there with, I mean, decades of debt, you know, so I mean.
20% or higher.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, they, they can get, yeah, way up there. I, I'm not a fan of debt. If there's any way to pay cash, we'll pay cash.
Cash works.
Yep. Now, I will say right now, the only caveat to that is the interest rates are so low, it's practically like borrowing for free, but still you never know what's going to happen. I mean, even though the interest rate's low, you've still got a principal payment that's going to come due no matter what.
For a long time.
Yeah, if you finance something, you know, a long time. Now, there's time to take things out a long time. If you know you've got something that's going to be needed for the next 70, 80 years, a school's a good example, then yeah, I mean, you're looking at a long-term debt, doesn't, doesn't bother me near as bad as taking on. A good example of something that I'm not a fan of ever taking debt on for is vehicles. There are some local governments that'll lease vehicles or finance vehicles and that just, I don't know, it bothers me. But not going to say I'd never do it. It all depends where I'm at and what the circumstances are, but it'd be a hard pill to swallow. So this is broken down a little bit differently. So you've got basically anything in red is what it costs for people. Blue is, you know, supplies, things of that nature. I've got education broken out here separately. You've got debt service again and then capital outlay are those, those tangible things you can touch, feel that we purchase in the course of a year. Largest departments, the public schools is by far the largest department, the largest appropriation that we make. And then public safety, DSS. And then lastly on here is public works. The reason that public works is high is we started to throw money into that budget, throws the wrong word, to appropriate money into that budget that we aren't necessarily planning on spending this year. But what happens is when public works has a situation that needs immediate action, it can take three to four weeks before we can get in front of the board to do a budget amendment. And so this gives some buffer in there so that they have something pop up. And then they budget, but there's always, and then sometimes we, if we budget 200,000 and that's to replace HVAC units, just as an example. But then we have a roof that goes bad in the middle of the year. Well, so we put off the HVAC unit that needed to be replaced and, and it breaks next year anyway. And so this allows some, some of those unforeseen things to, to be able to cover. These are the increases. Once again, school current expense, that is the unfunded state mandate for the classroom size, having to hire those extra teachers, TAs, curriculum coaches that you all talked about. You'll see a, a large increase in planning, but planning and IT both have got a pretty substantial, substantial, they've got two positions in each department, which drives that number up. And we'll get to the list of positions, but planning was a code enforcement officer that the board requested, an additional code enforcement officer and a, another planning technician, which is somebody that reviews the, the plans as they come in. It's kind of the, if we've got a choke point in our process, that's it, we need some extra people to do that. And then an IT, it's an extra support tech and then an administrative assistant to help, that'll also act as county receptionist. So there's your breakdown of number of employees. Obviously, public safety is, is the biggest sector. The, when you see enterprise on there, that's your utility departments. And I would expect that over the next, well, this year for sure, but over the next four to five years, that's probably where you see the largest employee growth. Good example, our water department on the Outer Banks is busier than it's ever been, so they've got to run more. We don't anticipate that seasonal change going totally away, but on the mainland as well, we've got so many more customers in the northern part of the county that we have to bring on extra people to run the water plant longer. So here, here are the positions that I've recommended for approval in the budget. Talked about the IT, you've got a temporary HR clerk, a trainings officer in communications. So right now, our supervisor is the one doing the training, but with the call volume that we see, they don't have ample time to do that and their other job. Temporary airport lineman. The airport is seeing, is actually profitable this year for the first time. I don't know if ever, but in a long time, maybe, oh, and I'm kind of looking to you, but ever. So we're going to invest a little bit in capital to fix the, the building up, but also give them a little extra help in the summertime. Our clientele at the airport is not general aviation clientele. It is that, but where we really have seen an increase in the revenue is from large private jets and they expect a different level of customer service than somebody who's driving a Cessna in on a Saturday, so.
They pay their own way.
Yeah, they do. Talked about the planning positions, income maintenance supervisors and DSS, that'll be partially funded by the state. Temporary water clerk, and then here are those utility positions I talked about. Cross connection operator in responsible charge, that is basically somebody on staff who's got an official certification that says when you take this pipe and you connect this pipe into it, it's done the right way. They oversee that. Our water system is big enough that we're required by the state to have one of those now. Two water plant operators, one on the mainland, one on the Outer Banks, and two line maintenance mechanics, one on the Outer Banks, one on the mainland. And then a utilities customer service rep. She had this customer, somebody has to, we need some extra help filling those questions about bills, so.
Why'd you cut my water off?
Or those. Currituck County Public Schools, you'll see the increase per student. That's United State Unfunded Mandate, but also the additional stuff that you all have wanted to fund, those TAs and curriculum coaches. It's interesting, I tried to find the chart, there used to be a really easy to find chart that would lay out exactly where you ranked in the state.
Yeah, we're about 15 or 17.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that with this rate, and hopefully they'll bring that chart back, and I'm going to make some calls to our General Assembly, to our legislators to see, but I think that's going to put us in the top 10. It will shock me if it doesn't, so. One, one point that I want to, I'll bring it up here, it's as good a place as any, and I'll look to the board for some guidance. The number that you see here, the 12, 634, 099, let me make sure I don't have a chart, here it is. This amount here is a 1.4% increase in the formula from last year, and then you multiply it times the number of kids. The board had adopted a policy previously that made it, the lowest it could be would be 2%, but that policy expired this June, so.
See, and I thought our conversations that we were going to continue that 2% at the minimum and then if it went higher, we'd give them the higher, but no, it wouldn't go any lower than 2%. I didn't know we capped it as a, at a year. I don't recall that.
I have, I have availability in the budget if you all want to go to the 2% or, you know, if you want to go to the 2%, it's about $70,000 is what you're looking at.
I, I thought we, when we had a discussion, we wanted to give, we wanted to have, we wanted to give them a constant, so at least they knew every year, it wouldn't go below this point. this.
And that agreement, I think predates me. I'm not trying to kick the can, but.
Yeah, we're trying to, because there was a volatility in the consumer price index, wasn't working right at all, and so we said, you know, let's set it at 2%. It'll always have this, this bottom floor of 2%. If it's over that, you get the excess, but you can always count on that.
But there was definitely a date at some point, because the form that we actually get from the school system has that, has a note in there that says it expires June 30.
I just don't recall the expiration date, do you, Kevin?
They had to put that in there.
I don't remember.
I remember we talked about it, but I.
I don't remember it capped, I don't remember it capped, I don't know why it would have.
Go ahead, yes, sir.
Because it was, Paul, you were a big part of that discussion back in the hour, Paul.
Sure.
Yeah.
And, and I remember that as well, but the flip side is.
They don't need it.
Okay, you said the 11-232 is not the full 2%.
Correct.
That, that also would have captured the educational, the additional teachers, all of that would have come out of that 2%.
Part of it was, 70, is about $70,000 difference you said.
How much was?
All I'm saying is the extra teachers assistants and the extra curriculum coaches, that would have come out of that 2%. I'm thinking they're better off with what we did than the blanket 2%.
Better off with the 1.4 that we did?
Well, yeah, but it's the 1.4 plus the educational improvement.
And the unfunded mandate.
I mean.
Okay, no, yeah, yes, we did for this, yes.
And that was not, that 2% was here, 2% see ya, you know. Right? I mean, it was not, Mike, we put a lot more effort into coming up with and trying to meet the needs of the school system with the way we did or worked with their budget this year than the 2% was, here it is, and see ya.
The 2% was designed to help just with that market fluctuations and things, those things that couldn't.
Inflationary costs, it could be colas that the state pass on that we have to absorb for the positions we fund, stuff like that.
Right.
So I'm just, I'm really just looking to the board. If you want, we can add that extra back in, and I say extra, but we can go to the 2% that had been the.
You do that too, would you take, would we take off the, take it from the sub, takes, does the school need it?
That's my, that's my point.
Right, they don't need, if they don't need it, they don't need it. We're funding them at a level that they needed to be funded at, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, right now, the 1.4 and what we're funding takes care of the needs of the school this year. So, I mean, so are we going to look at every year then with the.
We're gonna need to fix it right this minute.
So going forward, are we going to use the CPI index every year then?
So do you all.
Because it could be 3% someday, some years.
Well, we were willing to give them the 3. It was.
The issue during the recession, CPI bottomed.
Right.
And you would see like 0.1%, I mean, 0.4% some years.
Just remember last week CPI came out at 6%.
Right. Well, we need to cap that at 2 to 2 and 1/2. You get, that's your.
Dr. Lutz is willing to, to answer any questions you all may have.
Oh, he is, oh.
Well, come on up, and then, yeah.
That's different.
Did I say that right?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay.
I think this is an unusual year in, in many ways, and again, thank you for your support. So as Ben pointed out, it's about $70,000. 2% would be easy to budget moving forward, but we're comfortable this year not with the 1.4, especially with the additional support. We do have the oddity too, that what number that we base is what our state ADM is, and so the funding, as you can see in that number, which I can't see from this seat.
It, it went down.
It went down because the state ADM that we give you, the county, went down. Again, we're anticipating going up 100 once the school year starts. So the state will actually backfund us at some point during the year, but, look, but county does not. So I do think that is important, and that's, we, we figured that out into the budget moving forward, but that money does, is a loss for the year technically. Does that make, so we give, county government funds based on what the ADM the state gives us here in the past month. They will, but when our ADM goes up, and we anticipate it will, the state government will send us another check.
Okay.
But we're not going to come in, I'm not going to come forth and ask the county government for anymore. That's not, as Ben is tight on budget, I mean.
Thank you.
It's tight on budget, plus that's no way to plan your budget. That, that's, county government does not have the coffers the state has.
Right.
So we're comfortable at 1.4. I would like to see the 2% moving forward in terms of being able to plan your budget. That would be steady, we're above where that is. I think the one year, there was no bump whatsoever, and we do see our costs do go up with insurance, retirement, different pieces that they, I hate to use nickel and dime into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so $70,000 does make a difference because they'll bump the retirement up a percent and put it back on the local for us to pay. So it's, it doesn't actually usually, it doesn't go to necessarily a position so much it goes to the, the 40% of employment above and beyond what the salary is.
Okay.
So I guess we keep it at 1.4 this year, Ben, but then maybe have some discussions with this board.
Over the next year.
If we want to standardize a rate or something going forward for the school to, to know, so.
I, I tell you, and, and I don't mind the budget discussion where we discuss what the school's needs are and, you know, come up, I mean.
Well, in the past, we never got the budget in time, so we never knew. So we had to guess. So now we're.
For the shocking all campaign of getting a budget on time.
I did, thank you for that.
So, but yeah, so yes, appreciate, so, I mean, you're right, I think we have something better to look at now and help us.
Well, I guess the important message is we're here to be supportive of the school system and get them where they need to be.
So I guess we'll keep it as like right now, but then we'll have the discussions among the board and.
All right.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. So this is the, when I talked earlier, this is the, a large portion of the extra funding from the 46 cents tax rate, this is where it goes. 1.6 eventually to cover school debt, 750,000 to cover operational costs. So like I said, between here and when the schools actually, we take on the debt and then open the doors, we'll be saving roughly 2.3 million every year to be able to pay down the amount that we have to borrow on that school. Here's your debt management. This includes utility funds as well, so. So Southern Outer Banks is getting ready to be debt-free. Mainland Water is, is got a few years ahead of it, but we're making some major capital improvements and with, as well as the addition of a new skid in the next couple of years, and we're going to be able to do that with cash. So we should be able to go mainly, or for a big way, debt-free on our utility system as well.
And these are enterprise funds, and there's no property tax that goes into these.
No, sir. The, the only one that has, there's no ad valorem tax, Ocean Sands has got a separate tax district. So if you own property in Ocean Sands, you do pay a property tax. Nobody else except folks in Ocean Sands pay that.
Right. So use or pay.
Yes, sir. So that was the general fund. We're going to talk about operating budgets, and now we're going to take all of those other funds, enterprise funds, and kind of talk about them as the operating budget for the county. These are the different operating budgets. Enterprise funds are your utility funds, special revenue funds are things like service districts. So our net operating budget is 94 million. Now, you're going to see this slide, and you're going to be like, how's this possible? So the overall operating fund is seeing a 0.24% decrease. While the general fund is increasing, some of those other funds are showing a decrease, whether it's projects, mainly it's capital projects that are not occurring in the next year, and that's where the bulk of that's going to exist, so. So we've talked about the, the tax rate that I'm proposing at 46 cents. I wanted to talk through, well, we have to talk through the, the rate study that occurred and what it recommended for the different, I'll say enterprise funds is the term we use, but we can think of them as utilities. So we, we paid a company to come in and look at a rate study. We could have done it ourselves, I believe, but sometimes it's better to have somebody come in and look at your own house and tell you where things are and how you're looking. For the bulk of the utilities, they recommend an annual increase of 3.5% for the next 10 years. So as an example, Mainland Water, Southern Outer Banks Water, Ocean Sands Sewer, Ocean Sands Water, all that, that essentially covers the cost of inflation, and it allows, it allows those, it allows all of these funds to stay solvent. There are cities, and I'll say cities because water and sewer are typically things you find in cities, some counties do it, but you have a lot of systems across the state of North Carolina that the local government commission is having to get involved in because they have not adjusted accordingly to be able to adapt to the, the long-range financial issues they're going to have.
So for people that don't know what the LGC is.
Sorry. So the LGC is an organization that's appointed by different members, it's a state organization that looks at the financial health of different communities, local government institutions around North Carolina, and they will, any debt that anybody borrows in North Carolina, larger debt, any city borrows, has to go through LGC for approval. They also get involved in situations where a, a local government or even a sewer utility that's a, that's a local government can't manage its financial responsibility and can't raise enough revenue in order to address major issues that are occurring. So there are sewer lines in this state that are failing, water plants in this state that are failing, and they're failing because people didn't plan ahead. And instead of making a slightly difficult decision 20 years down, you know, 20 years ago, they're now forced with an extremely difficult decision, you know, today, where they've got to try to raise a whole bunch of revenue quickly. So they've got to raise all that money at one time, and it's a, if you do it that way, you're, you're going to have to pay for it eventually. You know, you've got to replace water lines, you've got, they don't last forever. And so if you put it off and put it off and put it off, because you want to make sure the rates don't go up, eventually you see, I mean, massive rate increases. So in the, and when the LGC comes in, the individuals who were elected to govern that organization have no say in what that rate goes to. So, so what we've done here, we've tried to look forward. We looked at a 10-year study and said, okay, how do we prepare for the future? We don't want to be one of those communities in 10 years. And if we get to the end of this study, I'd recommend another 10-year study, so we're always kind of ahead. So I talked about the 3 and 1/2% annual increases, those just keep pace with inflation. Mainland Sewer is looking at a 6% increase according to the rate study. That funds the 3 and 1/2% annual kind of inflationary increase that you're going to see in smaller capital purchases. But the other, the 2 and 1/2% increase on top of that raises enough revenue in the sewer fund so that it can cover and pay back the transfer tax fund for the sewer plant replacement and expansion that has to occur in Moayaw. And the board talked at length about that and how we would manage that, and so that is the rate that has to be set in order to accomplish that goal. And then the, the solid waste fee is recommended to increase it by $81 on the mainland and four-wheel drive area, and then in Corolla where you have door-to-door, you know, curbside collection, it's recommended to go up $151 in one year, and then a 3 and 1/2% increase annually after that. We looked at a lot of things at the staff level to see if there was a way to keep from having to pass this increase on. It's a national trend. We don't have any staff in those departments, I mean, that are paid for out of those funds. Matter of fact, for the solid waste fund, we actually, that is the one enterprise fund where property taxes do go into it, to about $1.2 million a year to try to help offset some of the cost. The national trend is that it costs more to put things in landfills, recycling costs have gone up, and also, you know, truck drivers are in demand, you know, so there are all these, these price constraints or price increases that are being passed on. We looked at ways to try to decrease the haul rates. We're hopeful that with the decal system, and we've got cameras going up, that we'll be able to keep people from dumping here to minimize any other increases. I brought it to the board about looking, this is going to sound bad the way I'm going to say it, but looking to make the convenience sites less convenient, where we would require citizens to haul things further, that would cut down on the haul costs that we have to pay. At the end of the day, you know, we kind of, the, the board decided, and I think rightfully so, that, you know, that if you're asking somebody who has got to, got to get rid of a couch and, you know, Spot Road to drive all the way up to the transfer station to get rid of that couch, the couch might not end up in the transfer station, worst-case scenario, but they're going to burn extra fuel to take it all that way. So this allows the service that the citizens are used to to remain the same, but it does cost more money to be able to provide that service. And if we don't do these increases, your solid waste fund will be in a deficit, and you'll have to increase the general fund contribution to it. So either way, that, that is going to be paid by the residents of this county, whether it's on, as a flat fee for solid waste, or whether that 46 cents can't be 46 cents because you're having to prop up, you know, the solid waste in the general fund.
Let me, let me say one thing about the decal system. Before the pipe collapsed there at Shawboro, I was talking to one of the attendants, and I was told that on a Thursday and Friday the week before, they turned away 57 non-county residents in two days at Shawboro. And I talked to a gentleman the other day who works at the Barco site, and he said, you'd be surprised how many people he's turned away at Barco because of, they're not having decals, and they lived in past anchor camming going to work down to the beach. And I've helped the Grandy Station turn a few away.
Well, like I said, I mean, so we're increasing our enforcement of that, we're, like I said, putting those cameras in so that we can, if somebody comes in, and the other thing is, people have been really rude to the attendants, and so it's also so that we can document that behavior and figure out who those people are and make sure that they can be held accountable if they're violent or threatening.
Having to them.
Or they get banned. I've made a couple of those phone calls.
Or those, so.
Well, it looks like we're doing everything again to keep that cost to a minimum, and, and.
Without decreasing the service to the citizens, I don't know what else we can do. We, we can't go out for bid because we already do that, and we, so we get the lowest bid we can, I mean.
It is what it is.
Yeah, so.
Grass ain't cheap.
No, sir. So there's, there's your operating fund budget as opposed to the general fund, so that includes, like I said, enterprise funds, special revenue funds. So then the total budget is all that stuff I've talked about, plus the capital fund. It's a $2.23 million this year. Total fund is up 1.23%. These are the big projects that you're, that you're seeing in the capital funds. So it's constructing a public works building, which is basically going to be a warehouse with some office space. We need that for a whole host of reasons, one of which is to store supplies in the case of a hurricane. So I'll give you, that is an example. Replacing the fuel farm.
We get the email.
Commissioner McCord can speak to the reliability of the fuel farm.
Fuel pumps are down.
Yeah. Some recreational improvements, and then replacing's public safety vehicles. So we've got two ambulances, and I think it's nine vehicles in the sheriff's office. Those just have to be replaced from time to time, and so that, that drives some of that cost up as well. So there's your, your total budget as we head into 2022 compared to general fund. And here's the schedule, so I'm presenting today. You all could adopt this budget on June 7th if you so choose with a July 1 effective date. And you can either view it at county manager's office or on the website. One thing I do want to mention, we're going to have, I sent you all a link to a GIS map, if you all had a chance to take a look at that. That is something we're hopeful to go live with by end of day tomorrow. So all these increases that I've laid out in the manager's proposed budget, you can actually go click on a parcel, and it'll lay out what each of the increases is for the year. We are actually calculating in there the amount of increase from what you paid in 2020 to what you will pay this year or next year.
So real numbers for you.
Real numbers. Now, having said that, keep in mind, your revenue neutral rate is probably, most people would have, not everybody, but a lot of people would have paid more even under revenue neutral. It just depends. So, you know, as you, as the citizens, and we've got this in the narrative, look at that, you know, we are putting what the revenue neutral tax bill would look like too. Really, the fair comparison is to compare the revenue neutral to the 46 cent and do a little math on your own. But all that's on there, it automatically calculates if you're in the area to receive it. But we did the 2020 to the 46 cent because we wanted people to understand how it would impact their, their budget in real dollars.
So Owen's not going to each person's house.
Right.
So tell them how it's going to work.
All right, cool. Sorry, Owen.
And that's all that I have on the budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the, the board may have.
Any questions?
So was a lot.
All right, that was a lot.
43 slides.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stichler. Would the board like to take a quick break before we get into business? Okay, let's take a, like a five-minute break if we could and get, get back and get this finished up. Thank you. Let's get back in session here, and the next item is new business, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners amend, excuse me, old business, much wrong, old business, A, for some reason I had to mark that, I apologize. Consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 9, Article 3, Section 9-31, 9-33, and 9-36 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances modifying the requirements for interest of of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances, modifying the requirements for interest of amplified sound permits and permits to exceed certain decibel levels. I believe our county attorney will handle this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This matter was presented to the board three meetings ago in order to address a concern raised by Currituck County Sheriff Matt Byker as he realized that the camp, that, that permits to exceed allowed decibel levels had not been properly issued over many years. What Sheriff Byker realized was that permits that allow someone to exceed decibel levels in, in Table 1 contained in the ordinance have been issued more than two times per year for a given location, which is not permitted by the ordinance as it is currently written. So, as this has been presented to you over the last three meetings, there's been additional and further discussion about, well, what potential impact might this have on residential properties? And that concern arises out of the fact that another issue that Sheriff Byker realized is that these permits to exceed certain decibel levels have also been issued within residential use areas, which currently is also not permitted by the ordinance as written. The complicating factor there is that our tourist-dominated area of Corolla and the Currituck Outer Banks is well-known by the wedding industry and persons who hold weddings and other events there as a place that they can rent a venue or a large house and have their event there, but they're all within residential use areas, and so, they would not be eligible to receive a permit to allow for them to have amplified sound and/or a permit to exceed the allowed decibel levels.
Mr. McCrea, while you're hitting on that point, I want to highlight that point. That, but that, while it may not be allowed currently, it has been the practice for many, many years to allow them to actually get a permit.
That's correct. In fact, as Sheriff Byker determined, as the way, the way that the ordinance had been applied, it seems to me that, I understand, since its inception in around 1996, that permits have been regularly issued for amplified sound or to exceed decibel levels with, within residential use areas or for residential uses, and also permitted or have been issued more than two times per year in a given location. All of that is currently prohibited. The other complicating factor with that application of the ordinance as written is that even the county's wellhead or historic Corolla Park property, which has become a popular place for weddings and other events, would only be able to receive two permits per year. And so, you can understand what complicating factor that might be for the county as well. So, at your last meeting, Sheriff Byker actually appeared, as you recall, and reported to you that, I think, the year before COVID, is the way I understood it to say, there were approximately 60-some permits in this nature issued, that he, the sheriff's department had not received many if any complaints for uses under those permits, while the sheriff's department may well have received other noise ordinance violation complaints. It was not particularly those locations where these permits for amplified sound or permits to exceed certain decibel levels were located. So, in order to address those concerns, this ordinance proposes two things. First of all, with regard to concern expressed by Commissioner Jarvis at the last meeting, particularly about the residential use properties and the possibility of permits issued to, to exceed decibel levels as spelled out in the ordinance, there was some discussion that occurred with, well, how can we continue to perhaps allow for residential use in those areas where there are more tourists, where there are more weddings, where there are more venue-type of facilities, while at the same time recognizing that we wouldn't want to see the proliferation of such permits within residential uses, particularly in traditional neighborhoods on the mainland? And so, I suggested during that meeting that on page 39 of your agenda package, it begins the ordinance amendment at line 29 and 30, there is a provision relative to residential use or definition for residential use that says, "All premises containing habitually occupied sleeping quarters," that's the definition of a residential use, "not for zoning purposes, but for purposes of this noise ordinance." And then, continuing, it says, "However, premises containing transient commercial sleeping quarters are considered commercial uses." And so, I suggested to you that perhaps one way to get around that concern expressed by, particularly about Commissioner Jarvis, would be to strike the word "commercial" so that it would read, "However, premises containing transient sleeping quarters are considered commercial uses." And of course, the board expressed, particularly Commissioner Beaumont, as I recall, that we don't know that we want to go down a path where we're starting to call or recognize residential use as a commercial use in some way. And so, in order to fix that, what is proposed in this ordinance is to create a new use classification there at line 33 on page 39 of your agenda package, that calls it a transient residential use, which is a residential use premises with a term of occupancy, possession, or tenancy of the property, that's for less than 30 consecutive days. And that seems to me that would take care of the concern of nonpluriferation of permits to exceed decibel levels within traditional residential neighborhoods and uses on the mainland, and whereas recognizing and allowing what has traditionally been the place where I think most of these permits have been issued in the tourist-dominated area of the Currituck Outer Banks, to continue as has been the practice, but now to continue lawfully.
Just a couple of things. I had someone ask me, so I thought I'd have you go into lay terms about amplified sound and when they're required to actually get a permit. It says, you know, it described amplified sound, but, so if I have a Bose little portable radio, for instance, and I take that out to the pool deck, that technically is amplified sound, is it not?
It is indeed defined as amplified sound, yes.
Okay, so, if I'm going out to the pool deck with my radio, I'm supposed to have a use permit at that time, especially, or a noise ordinance permit, or is, does the decibel level kick in?
Well, the way the ordinance is written, it, you actually, in order to have amplified sound, it would necessitate the requirement for an amplified sound permit. Now, so, so that's going to be.
Right. We're going to make a lot of money.
And so, it also applies, as the ordinance itself talks about, to restaurants that are playing amplified sound within the confines of the restaurant, but if the window happens to be open and that amplified sound is coming outside the restaurant, that really would, would require an amplified sound permit. I think most of the time, the way we see this ordinance applied, however, is for the permit to exceed the decibel levels set out in Table 1 of the ordinance. And so, I'll refer you there on page 41 of your agenda package. You'll see, Table 1 of the ordinance is amended to add under-residential and transient residential use. So, recognizing that without a permit to exceed the decibel levels provided for in this table, the transient residential use must, must meet the same decibel level as a residential use. But what is different, if you can read out to the bottom of that page in line 13, of "Sound levels more than limits established in Table 1," that's the table just above, "will be permitted in public space, commercial or business space, manufacturing, industrial space, and now will be added, and transient residential space, but not on residential space," which is the way it current, the ordinance currently reads. So, there's now differentiation between the residential use and the transitional residential use. And then, I guess the language that really led us into this ordinance amendment exercise actually continues over onto page 43 of your agenda package, beginning at line 28, continuing through line 34, which would be to strike the limitation on the number of permits to exceed decibel, the decibel levels within, at a given location.
So, I want to, I'm going to belabor this because we keep getting the same emails. And yes, we've got your emails. Yes, the board has looked at your emails, and when we make a change to an ordinance, it shows the old language stricken through with a new language highlighted next to it and underlined generally in some way, shape, or form or fashion to differentiate that. At no point have we suggesting changing the decibel levels. These decibel levels have been in place since 1996, and so, the board is not considering that, and yet, we still keep getting emails about that. So, I just want to belabor that point to make sure that everyone understands that, A, the decibel levels are not changing, and B, this is really putting in, writing in what has been the practice all along for the last 20-plus years, that, that Corolla is a vacation destination, and more importantly, a wedding destination. The county spends a considerable amount of money, occupancy tax money, to woo those people to this county, to spend their money here, to have their wedding here, to have their event here, a bar mitzvah, whatever it is, 50th wedding anniversary. We did one of those for my family and rented a couple houses years ago to do that for my grandparents. So, I just want to make sure that it's, we're, it's not really something new that we're doing. It is fixing something that needed to be fixed because it's been the practice commonly for the last 24 years.
Well, the other, the other thing is, too, far as the permit and the process and everything, far as like the checks and balances on our end, that this is me switching hats. Far as Captain Holden is in charge of noise permits, far as he's going to go through it with a fine-tooth comb, far as if Ms. Kitty got a permit and she violated it at the beach, we got a lot of complaints on it or something like that, it's not a guarantee that somebody's getting a permit. Them applying for the permit is the first step of being compliant, in my opinion, and I mean, I think the board would be in consensus with that.
And, and it shows responsibility on their part, that they understand the rules that are in front of them, and it garners the least amount of complaints. Most of them are going to be a nuisance complaint from someone bringing their stereo out and having a big time at the pool deck or in the backyard.
And that's a good point, because if they constantly violate it, they're not.
They're not going to get the permit.
They're not going to be able to have wedding venues anymore.
All right, so, to that point, let me point you again on page 43 of your agenda package. If, if you go to, beginning at line 23, this is a mandate. This is current language. I mean, it's nothing that's being added or changed. This is current mandate that the sheriff must consider when he receives an application for a permit to exceed the allowed decibel level. He must consider the nature of the requested activity, the previous experience with the applicant, the time of the event, other activities in the vicinity of the location proposed, the frequency of the application, the cultural or social benefits of the proposed activity, the effect of the activity on any residential area of the county, and previous violations if any of the applicant. So, it is not an automatic issuance of the permit just because the sheriff has received an, an application. He must go through this analysis for each application at each given location and make a determination as to whether it is appropriate to issue the permit.
And another thing, if I could say, just, and like we said, we'll just use a common address, say 100 Stone Street, whatever, and I know that's not, you know, we're just using an address. From 2007 on, in the history in our computer system with the sheriff's department, it has every single call at that residence. So, if you see 25 noise complaints from something where it's a violator, be it, you know, the last, I mean, they're not going to get it. I mean, I hate to say it, but I mean, like I said, if they're a frequent flyer and offender, so, to avoid seven additional calls there, they won't get the permit.
And so, so there, there are two things that, from a staff level, we think the public ought to understand and hopefully make this easier to understand, is first, is first, the sheriff will be asked to provide a regular report to this Board of Commissioners regarding noise permits that have been issued and complaints that have been received relative to the issuance of those noise permits. That will be important because it will then, secondly, allow for this board to remedy any matters that it finds has become problematic. And that means that you are able, among other things, to amend this ordinance at, at any meet, any regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners. This is not like the Unified Development Ordinance, which requires a lengthier process in order to be amended. You may amend this at your next meeting if you deem it necessary and advisable upon a unanimous vote of the board at the first reading of, of an ordinance amendment, or it comes back to the next meeting, at which time it can be adopted by a unanimous vote of the board. So, you have essentially a quick method.
The second time is a majority.
I'm, I'm sorry. Majority. Simple majority.
Just checking.
So, you have a, a method that you can quickly remedy any, any issues that might arise from, from an amendment to this ordinance. And again, the important point is that you're putting into law what has been the practice since the beginning.
Legalizing it.
Right.
The, the only thing I would, and I understand that what we've been, the processes that's being followed, right? But that wasn't the process that was voted on by the Board of Commissioners. It just happened to not be, just happened that the sheriff did not necessarily understand what was supposed to be done, and I, and I appreciate, we haven't really had a whole lot of issues with what was being enforced, but I would not like to get into the habit of just enforcing things by accident the way and hoping for the best. So, the important thing here is not, to me, is not reemphasizing the fact that what the Board of Commissioners passed was not being enforced by the sheriff's department. It's just that as life has gone on, we've not seen the offense or the abuse that, and so, this is, this is relaxing, to some degree, the county's policy on noise permits in that it increases the number per residence or per address.
I think, I think that's, that's the correct analysis. This was obviously a misinterpretation over the years. It was then thereafter a regular application of that misinterpretation. As we've seen, it does not appear to have been any ill effect on that misinterpretation, but once Sheriff Byker realized that the ordinance had been misinterpreted, he properly brought it to my attention and to this board's attention in order that you might actually make a decision whether the ordinance should be amended as proposed, or whether it should remain as it originally was written and intended in 1996.
And to his credit, he came forward and said, hey, and he's the one that brought it forward.
Yes.
It's not like he got quote-unquote "caught" or whatever. It's, he realized, and, and I appreciate wholeheartedly his willingness to say, hey, give me direction on how you want me to go from here, so.
I, I want to just say, so the public understands, Sheriff Byker calls me regularly and apologizes because I've been reading the ordinance again. He tells me where ordinance is, and I found something I either have a question about, am I interpreting it correctly, or are we actually applying it the way it's supposed to be applied? And I always tell him, do not apologize. Thank you for caring enough to, to read the ordinances, to educate yourself, and ask questions, to understand how the ordinances should be applied.
And along that same vein, it's my hope, because I still have qualms about even the new definition, but with this data that we are going to be collecting, it is my hope that if this does become an issue, that this board will act immediately to undo this. I, I'm hoping that people who apply for these permits indeed are those that are doing the right thing and that are the responsible ones. The ones that are getting the complaints are the irresponsible ones. I hope that we don't have any irresponsible ones, but if we do get complaints on these that are getting the permits, it is my hope that we will immediately act to remedy that by changing the language of this ordinance.
And I think you're right. I think this data will help us, you're right, determine if it's, if it's a permitted one or if it's just a violation.
But it's got to be legitimate complaints.
They've got to go out there and monitor the sound, and yes, and show that they are.
We have those decibel meters where we have.
Yes.
Just can't be, they're too loud over there.
Right.
Well, okay, that's relative to, as the sheriff said, they'll respond to any noise complaint.
We have to go to every one of them.
I think he's hitting a benchmark. You want to see that it's not a frivolous complaint.
Yes.
Well, they're just being loud over there.
Well, I think we're collecting data, and going through that data as to what's frivolous and what's legitimate, I, I think that's going to be difficult. I, I think the data should speak for itself. If, if the sheriff goes and investigates, and indeed, it's not a violation of the decibel level, I hope that that will be noted.
It's documented.
But, you know, I, I, I hope that we don't cherry pick our data. I hope that the data will play out and we will see a trend.
And it touched the point that Bob brought out, right? I mean, it's a lot easier to be found violating the noise ordinance than it is to not be, right? Because I would be, I would venture to bet 90% of all of those complaints aren't kids having a good time in the pool, somebody's got their radio on, and that's all it takes, right? That's all it takes.
And reading through the sheriff, you know, last meeting, he gave us a list, and going through it, it, it really showed, you might have three calls at the same residence within an hour of each other. That's when you're getting into, probably not a wedding at that point. As a matter of fact, it wasn't in one case. It was just people.
And, and incident in Idlet last year, I mean, a resident kept calling about twice a week on, on another neighbor, complaining about violation, violation, the sheriff kept coming up, no violation, kept coming. kept coming up, no, he was constantly calling because he didn't like the neighbor. Finally, the sheriff probably told him, you're going to get cited for misuse of the call or whatever, file falls of court.
All reports misuse, no.
Yeah, so, so, yes. Anyways.
All right. Thought everybody got along.
Ben, you got something? Oh, okay, I thought you wanted.
Um, is there any other?
I found it was just in a weird spot.
I mean, like you said, the, the main thing is, everything is like the noise meters. I mean, we have a training on those, the, the, the machines. I believe there's three of them. I mean, we, I think we have five. There's three of them, I believe, in Corolla. One's in Knott's Island. We might have six. There's three, two, and one. One's in Knott's Island and two are on the mainland, and three are in Corolla.
I think the people are the worst of those who aren't even worried about it.
Yeah, they're not there. Exactly.
That's my point.
That's why it came out of Matt's report.
I hope that that's what we'll, we'll visit at the end of the season.
And just so everyone knows, the sheriff went back and looked at, I was nineteen, because it wasn't much happening last year, and we had about a hundred and fifty complaints in total. And out of the thousands and thousands and thousands of homes we have over there, and the turnover every single week, and hundreds of thousands of visitors, a hundred and fifty-ish complaints. And quite a few of those were redundant complaints on the same property. So it wasn't even that many when you got to it. So I understand that people were worried about this becoming Pandora's Box, and it's going to turn into something else, but I just don't see it happening that way. It's, it's really the, probably the wedding industry that is driving these people getting these things to say, hey, went to the bride, you got to go get this permit, you got to do this, you got to do that, and laying out what they need to do to have a successful event here.
Mr. McCree, was that, did you finish up your presentation?
I have nothing.
Any other questions for board members or anything regarding ordinance before we take some action on this?
No, I just want to note that everything will be properly documented as it has in the past, like the sheriff stated to, you know, the numerous complaints. And like you said, I would, I would say it's a, a single percentage, you know, a very, very minute, where, you know, if there's fifty permits, it's, you know, most of the time, like I said, they get a warning the first time, and then they're going to get action the second time. And that usually, that warning pretty much solves it.
All right, well, if there's no further questions for Mr. McCree, I'll ask this board to take some action on this item.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will move to approve as presented.
Motion, Mr. Etheridge. Any further discussions? Okay, then all in favor saying goodbye by aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. McCree. Now we'll go into new business, excuse me, on that. Item A under new business, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners amending section ten dash sixty-two of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances to prohibit parking on the beach strand from the North Beach access ramp northward for one and one-half miles, and amending section ten dash sixty-three of the code of ordinances to clarify the emergency vehicle exception for operating a motor vehicle in a restricted driving area on the beach strand. I believe county attorney has this one as well.
Yes, this is another ordinance amendment that the sheriff also brought, brought to our attention. It, it had always been the practice that the first one and a half miles of beach from the North Beach ramp northward for one and a half miles was a park, parking-free zone. That is, there could be no motor vehicles parked within that stretch of the beach. Actually, the ordinance currently provides that parking is prohibited only in the first one-half mile. It became a, it became a custom or acclimated to that one and a half miles, apparently because U.S. Fish and Wildlife had jurisdiction over one mile of the one and a half miles, until such time as a county received ownership of that property in the, in the land swap with U.S. Fish and Wildlife a year before last. And so now that means there, there is no federal law enforcement on that additional one mile, and thus necessitates the need for the county to amend this ordinance to provide that the parking of any vehicle on the beach strand in an area extending from the North Beach access ramp northward for one and one-half miles is prohibited. This ordinance amendment was also on page fifty, at line three, clarifying an issue that came to our attention last week. There, there are some exceptions to the ability of driving and parking in an area just south of the North Beach ramp, but, but there has been some argument that there's the ability for a tow truck, for example, to park there and, and await, await for people needing assistance to then respond from that location. That, that is not my view of what the ordinance reads currently, but just to clear up any misunderstanding, it is proposed there at line three to add words responding to law enforcement or central dispatch directions. So an exception to the beach driving and parking ordinance would be county employees, county contractors, county vehicles, or emergency vehicles that are responding to law enforcement or central dispatch direction are exempt, not just some individual that might be operating a business and wants to park and wait for opportunity. That, that's all the ordinance provides and contains, and I'd be glad to answer any question.
I've been in this, Sheriff.
Yeah, he's been busy.
He reads, he reads all the time, I can attest to that.
So just to, for the board, I don't know how many of you have talked about this, but we've had the tow truck operators, right, when you come on the beach, sitting off to the right side by the horse fence there for on and off for years, and it's been a point of contention as to whether or not they are considered a.
Emergency vehicle.
Emergency vehicle, I guess, yeah. And so when they, when they're hooked up and they have their beacons on, they could probably let, recognize them as an emergency vehicle, but otherwise, they are not an emergency vehicle and therefore not allowed to park there and lie in wait, as the county attorney said, to charge somebody a lot of money to get unstuck. So I talked to sheriff about this a little bit, I talked to Kevin about it, since he does some beach duty, and I talked to some of the sheriff's deputies on the beach about it, and it's kind of a toss-up as to whether or not to allow this, so. But rather than have them lie in wait, I think it's, it's better for them to just have to, to respond to a call, or they're out there moving around anyway, and not have them just kind of circling the.
And this, this in a way prevents them from doing what they have been doing, which is to move up and down the beach and, and certainly assisting people that need assistance. But what this does do is makes sure that the ramp area is free and clear of any potential obstructions, as it sometimes can be difficult enough to get off the beach and onto the ramp.
We get a couple, we could have our tow truck show, Tow Truck Wars in Crow or something.
Well, that's, I mean, that's what they, they sit literally a mile and a half in face, and there's a rotation.
They'll, they'll kind of just ease on up and park a little ways off, a couple hundred yards up the beach, or they'll sit in the vehicle, you know, not parked, so, so they can respond if they need to, but it's just, it, it, it'll help avoid clutter at the ramp as well with them hanging out, and who's calling, is it, that's my tow, and this, that, and the other, so.
Racing to get there.
Yeah, they can race at fifteen miles an hour.
Okay, any other questions for the county attorney? If no further questions, I'll go ahead and on this, also ask the board for some action on this.
Can I ask one question? I'm sorry, I know where we discussed, where you said, I believe he said county, like a county vehicle or county, like a, like when they're repairing the fence. I mean, their contract, okay, I was just making, I knew we.
They have a reason to be there.
Ever, okay. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that was.
Good.
Perfect.
Okay, all right, well, I'll ask the board then for a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion for approval, and a second from Commissioner Jarvis. Any further discussions? All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously on this one. Thank you, sir. The next item under new business is item B, consideration for approval of design proposal for Moyack Middle School renovation and addition, and I believe the county manager has this.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Somehow wastewater ended up in a title slide, but I don't know how that happened. So if you're seeing it on TV, on the PowerPoint, it might say wastewater. But it's not wastewater, has nothing to do with wastewater. The Moyack Middle School renovation addition, this is looking at approval for the design proposal, for the board to give the manager approval to sign the contract and accept the design proposal. Design cost for this project is six hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. This will add six classrooms to the, uh, six classrooms to the school, as well as a renovation of the dining area and the multipurpose room. As we talked through with the superintendent and the facilities director out there, that multipurpose room can be used in different ways if we'll do some work to it. They lack a true band room in that school, and so this gives them that functionality as well as using it for other things. The estimated cost of the project, everything, FFNE, design, construction, would be six million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand and ninety-six dollars. It's important to understand that you're not voting on spending that amount tonight. All I'm looking for is approval to spend the six hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand per design cost. That construction cost includes a fifteen percent escalation and some contingency that is just built in in case of COVID price increases continuing. Be happy to answer any questions.
And even if we approve this tonight, we could postpone if the cost of material keeps going up, because if you look at what we were told when we were first discussing the two additions, I read somewhere where lumber has gone up two hundred and fifty percent, and I think we need to be very concerned over the cost just going up.
I think that it would go off for bid at that point for the construction.
Well, so this is a design-build project, so what will happen once the design's done, the contractor will come back to us with a, a price estimate, once we're at a certain stage of design, and then the board can make a decision whether to go forward at that point with the construction.
Do you have a certain period that you can go forward with it, or?
Typically, as you get into the last stages of design, they'll come forward with a GMP, guaranteed maximum price, and at that point, you all would have to initiate the county to move forward with that process. So it, it's after the design's done, you can get good estimates. That number that I'm giving you is without any design work done, so it's really rough numbers.
And when I look at lumber going up two hundred and fifty percent, you know, we might be better to sit on it because they're saying it's gone up because of COVID and the lack of getting supplies and everything.
Well, so, and on this project, we're roughly a year away from the design being completed, so it could be in that timeframe the price comes down, or it goes up, or there's a better, instead of being this flux with COVID, maybe the building industry has stabilized, and we know at least what the new normal's going to be, so.
I had a contractor telling me last week, they've already got notice that lumber will go up thirty-five percent July one.
So, and like I said, we've got to figure out what the new normal is, because the new normal is a thirty-five percent increase every six months, we want to build it sooner than later, but if the new normal is, we see in the next year that maybe prices go down, then it's a different discussion. But we do have, it'll give us a year to, roughly, to kind of work through that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the county manager on this? Here or none, I'm going to ask the board for some action on this in form of a motion?
Move for approval.
I have a motion from Mr. Etheridge, and a second, Commissioner McCord. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
I still have a problem with the ducks.
I understand, yes. So can I, any other question, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Can I ask one thing? In the consent agenda, on page seventy-two, it's talking about moving firemen, I think, salary to overtime?
So, um, so what that, what that is, is it's moving money from salaries to overtime. We spent a period of the year in the fire service where we weren't at full staff, so we had to spend more in overtime, but we had lapsed salaries in the salary line because we didn't have regular people filling those positions. So as we get towards the end of the year, there's not enough money in overtime, so we've got extra money in salaries.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, consent agenda?
Move to approve.
A motion for approval?
Second.
And a second, Commissioner Jarvis, any other questions? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, at this time, I am going to go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn from our regular meeting.
So move.
Motion, and I'll.
Second.
A second from Commissioner Etheridge. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. I'll now convene into the special meeting with Tourism Development Authority. I believe we have Commissioner, or excuse me, County Manager, Commissioner. County Manager Stike was going to present this.
He's getting all kinds of promotions tonight.
Mr. Justin. Emotions, promotions.
Yeah, I don't know which way that shakes, but I appreciate it. So this is going to go over the, essentially, the occupancy tax budget. You have to sit as the Tourism Development Authority to hear this budget, so this is the presentation for that budget, much like the other, you'll have a public hearing at the next meeting, and then you can choose whether or not to adopt at that meeting. So basically, there, on the occupancy tax, the original three percent is tourism-related, and then as you go through the additional pennies that were added, it's broken up promotion and tourism-related. Essentially, what it boils down to is two-thirds is tourism-related, one-third of promotions. So what we've got budgeted, this is essentially what the, the numbers look like and how they break down, roughly eight point three million dollars for tourism-related and four point one million to promote travel and tourism. And I'm going through, if you have any questions, jump in, so. This gives you kind of an explanation of what it means to promote travel and tourism. So this is essentially what we do to advertise and market an area or activity, publish and distribute pamphlets and other materials, and it includes administrative expenses incurred when engaging in these activities. That's the, the rough breakdown on how we spend promotions money. Seventy-six percent of it actually goes to promotions. This is the different forms of promotions that we use. Social media is, is transitioning into the largest chunk. I can tell you any extra money that we, we give, that's where tourism likes to spend it. And it says social media, we think of that as Facebook, but actually, there's some digital media built in there as well. So if you're on YouTube and a, a, you know, commercial might pop up for Currituck.
Yeah, we've got Hulu, we've got all that stuff.
Yep. And if I can just say, part of it is the circumstances, part of it is the good management, part of it is tourism. Promotions, I, I don't know that we could do a much better job filling houses than we've done this year, so.
They did a good job, the Tourism Department, when they were helping with the code, like, per se, they had a few million.
They stepped right in there, yep.
They did.
So tourism-related expenditures, expenditures that in the judgment of you all, the Currituck County Board of Commissioners are designed to increase the use of lodging facilities, meeting facilities, recreational facilities, and conventions facilities in a county by attracting tourists or business travelers to the county. So here is basically a breakdown of Heritage Park, so that is Historic Corolla Park. You can see the revenues and then the expenditures. There is an increase in the personnel cost. Part of that is we've added some personnel because of the new Maritime Museum that's coming online, and you see the capital outlay there is nine hundred thousand. A large chunk of that is the playground facility that we're budgeting for in Historic Corolla Park. We probably, we may have more money in that budget than we need, but we've got to do a, a, more of a custom playground there because it has to fit with the aesthetics of the entire property. It's different than a playground you would put next to a ball field, for instance.
But the personnel, is that some money to help with public works, too?
Um, there's, so there's, there's, there's that. If we can find anybody, I'll be up front, I mean, that's a challenge recruiting in Corolla. Uh, there's custodial staff in there, there's the, the full year salary for somebody to manage the Maritime Museum as well, so. But then that's also all the other staff that's already out there, and the seasonal part-time staff that works at the wellhead and the facilities in the summer.
So Ben, while you're on that, on a park specifically, one of the things that you'd hit on, and we kind of just glossed over in our talks, was looking at a, a one fee for all thing. Why don't you take a minute to expound on that just a little bit so that the public understands?
Yeah, um, so, so I think that as we move forward, especially once we get control of the WRC building, you know, in, in two years' time, that my suggestion would be to main, to do a one ticket, so in other words, you pay a flat fee to come in. My suggestion at first is to set that fee at what it costs to take a tour of wellheads, since that is the fee that people pay right now, and that's the draw currently. The hope is that by people paying that fee, they'll then migrate into the other facilities, and that we can drive revenue up so that we can, you know, help to offset some of the operational cost of that facility. To give you an idea, the WRC had a roughly a hundred and eleven thousand visitors last year just to that facility. So if we get to the point where even if we're just charging three or four bucks for this all-encompassing ticket, then, I mean, you're talking about some, some considerable revenue above and beyond the eighty thousand that you see there.
You need to tell people when we say WRC, so they might not even know what you're talking about.
Wildlife, sorry, Wildlife Resources Commission Building, so the education center where they, they do educational fishing and hunting on that property. So I, I think that, um, I think that what, in my opinion, as we get control of that building and we're able to charge rates and fees for that, we look to, we would almost rather collect a lower fee per person if we can collect that fee from a wider group.
Water net, yeah.
So, you know, and then that also, I mean, if you've got a whole family and it's five bucks per person to come do an entire day's worth of activities, which is what it would be there, I'm not saying that five dollars is the fee that we would set, but, I mean, that's. but, I mean, that's...
Yeah, because some of them are already sunburnt, they need a break from the beach.
They need to get some air conditioning, yes, sir.
We've got three air conditioning buildings there.
You go. So, also in tourism-related expenditures, we have a, we transfer money to cover the increased cost of what it takes to run, especially, public safety in the Outer Banks. So, you'll see there, there's a transfer of a little over two million dollars from EMS and fire services. So, we have two fire stations in Corolla. That's not necessarily something that we would have to have if we didn't have, you know, full-time or the population increase that we see every season, so... Sheriff's Office is the same thing. We've been, you know, both of those transfers have happened for a very long time. Historic Corolla Park Capital is on this list, but like I said, a large portion of that would be the playground. Lifeguard Services is a really expensive service every year, but those guys do a phenomenal job.
How many rescues, how many rescue, they had last year?
They had a pile of rescues, and once again, I mean, very successful year as far as safety of our swimmers.
That was the thing, we had that presentation for that company, that guy came in, all they talked about was safe beaches, safe beaches and clean beaches.
Yep, and then beach walkovers. So, anybody have a chance to see any of the ones we've completed?
I did, I was at the beach Friday.
So, I think they, we talked about how we were making them a little wider. I think they're much more visitor-friendly.
Why is the ones apparently, and I can't remember which one it is, that's so much higher?
We made all of them higher so that as the dune...
But one feels like...
Well, as the dune accretes, you know, because we have dunes that are growing as opposed to diminishing, it buys us more time from having to replace it again.
Can we at least put a slide?
I can work on that for you, yes, sir.
That's part of the new playground.
Yeah, water slide.
If someone slide out into the street, that'll be fun.
So, yeah, once again, the calendar's the same as the general fund. May seventeenth, today, presentation, June seventh, public hearing, possible adoption, July one, effective date. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No, sir.
Here are no questions. I'll ask for motion then to adjourn from the...
We have some budget amendments, don't we?
We do have, yeah.
We need to get, we need to get through.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done with all, I'm sorry, geez.
Went the wrong way, but yeah, so there are some budget amendments. My computer crashed.
It's pretty simple stuff. The budget amendments are just housekeeping stuff.
I think they're mostly cleanup for the end of the year.
I'll move to approve the budget amendments.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
And I'll move to adjourn the TDA meeting.
Now, we have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner White. Second, Commissioner McCord, all in favor? Aye. Okay, now, I'll convene into the special meeting of Ocean Sands Water and Sewer District.
Mr. Chairman, once again, a budget presentation, but the slides get less and less as we go forward, so I've only got six on this one. So, here is your budget for operations for Ocean Sands for the next year. You'll see that the, at the end of the year, you're looking at a little bit of a deficit, but developmental fees cover some of that. Those are the fees that were collected whenever we have taps. So, and also, there is some fund balance in there. Operations, excuse me, capital operations that you've got here. So, you've got tower maintenance on the water side and sewer. There's a portable jet or a cargo trailer, monitoring well replacements, coating the inside of the tank at the sewer site, plant upgrades, taking things and giving them a way to basically valve from one tank to the other. New vehicle and then SCADA, which is the system that lets us talk to the plant when we're not physically there. The other thing, just to highlight here, since this is a utility, recommended a increase, the Ocean Sands Water and Sewer rates, three and a half in the sewer and three and a half in the water for the next ten years based on the rate study. Same schedule as mentioned before, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions, okay. I guess now we'll move into the budget amendments.
Yep, since his computer is broken.
Once again, the budget amendments were basically housekeeping at the end of the year.
Yep.
So...
So, I'll move to approve the budget amendments.
I have a motion, second, from Commissioner Jarvis. Any other questions? All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Thank you. Now, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion adjourn. I have a second, Commissioner McCord, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, watching on TV.